Good afternoon, everybody. I'm calling the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order for Thursday, December 6, 2018. Ms. Vaughn, would you take role, please?
Thank you, Chair Wiscum.
Here.
Vice Chair Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Campanella.
Here.
Commissioner Higgins.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Okay, we're going to move on. Oh, my goodness, I've lost my agenda. It's just here somewhere. I've got it, thank you. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, we're going to move on to item number two, preliminary matters. Two A is request for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of X agenda items. Ms. DeBusk?
Thank you, Chair Wiscum. I just wanted to announce that item three A, the PATH status report, has been postponed to December 20.
Okay, thank you. And number two B, announcements and appeals? Do we have anything there? Announcements and appeals? Sorry.
I'm sorry, no, Chair, we don't have any.
Thank you, okay. We're going to move on to item two C, review consideration and action on the following draft Planning Commission minutes and resolution. So the first one is the minutes from the November 1, 2018, meeting. You have two copies in front of you, and Ms. Vaughn has indicated that there were just some grammatical typo corrections on those.
Move to approve.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Okay, move by Commissioner Thompson, second by Commissioner Schwartz. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, great. And now we're going to move on to C2, which is November 8, 2018, minutes. And there was a correction requested by Commissioner Campanella there. It's on page two, item number two C. And you'll have a copy of the correction.
Move to approve as corrected.
Okay, Commissioner Thompson moves as corrected. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jordan. Any...
I'm sorry, I probably shouldn't check up there. I wasn't here and I'm going to be abstaining.
Okay, so...
I'm abstaining from them.
Pardon?
I need to abstain as well.
Okay.
I'll second the motion, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So, second by Commissioner Schwartz. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions?
And Jordan and Higgins.
Commissioners Jordan and Higgins abstain. Okay, great. So now we're going to move on to item two D, which is comments from member of the public on items not on the agenda today. Is there anyone here that is speaking on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close general public comment. And we'll move on to item number three, the new items. So three A, as Ms. DeBusk says, has been postponed till December 20. And we'll move on to item number three B, which is the application of Suzette Naylor, AIA Architect for Allmond Holdings LLC, property owner at 1325 State Street, general plan designation commercial high-density residential for conversion of existing second-floor commercial office space to two residential units under the average unit size density incentive program. The discretionary applications required for this project and before us today are, number one, a parking modification, and number two, an open yard modification. So, Ms. DeBusk, would you like to introduce staff? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Stephanie Swanson will be giving the staff report today.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Ms. Swanson. And Mr. Dayton, I guess, here to answer any questions? Great, okay.
Thank you, Chair Wiscum. So, good afternoon. Today, we are here to discuss a proposed project at 1325 State Street. The proposed project includes converting existing second-story office space to two AUD apartments. AUD is applicable in this case because base density would be one unit, and the lot is in the high-density residential and priority housing overlays of the city. The maximum allowed average unit size would be 1,245 square feet. Only a 747-square-foot average between the two units is proposed. The project does require two modifications. The first would be an open yard modification and another for parking. To orient us, the project site is located three parcels northeast of the Arlington Theater. From State Street, the site is developed with Opal Restaurant. The second story of the site is not highly visible from State Street. You'd need to be in the parking lot across the street to see a second story. It's outlined here in red. The proposed parking project is at the rear of the parcel, facing a passeo, and includes converting existing office space on the second floor to two residential units. The subject lot, shown in blue on the left side of the screen, can be accessed from State Street or a passeo at the rear of the lot. You'll notice that this passeo is part of a larger privately-owned parcel. The applicant submitted a title report confirming there is an easement across this passeo, running across the entire length of it, for, quote, "right-of-way for persons," end quote. The easement does not specify that it is for commercial patrons or residential participants or business owners specifically, just that it is the right-of-way of persons. The building was designed in 1946 by the architectural firm Sol &amp; Murphy. As we can see from the elevation on the left and the contemporary image on the right, the passeo facade remains largely unaltered. The only exterior change proposed at this time is to remove the awnings on the second story that are not original. Post-Hazeltein Associates prepared a historic structures site report noting that the proposed project's impacts are anticipated to be less than significant. The Historic Landmarks Commission reviewed and accepted the structures report on March 21, 2018, and then subsequently designated the building as a structure of merit on September 19, 2018. Originally, the project description included only one residential unit. At the March 21, 2018, hearing, the HLC took a series of straw votes, and the applicant revised the project to include two units instead. The five straw votes were all unanimous. One, that odors from the below restaurant were a concern regarding livability. Two, that two units instead of one was supportable. Three, that required open yard not being provided on-site was more supportable than altering the existing balcony or adding another, and there were opportunities for residents to access outdoor living opportunities nearby like in parks. Four, the west, the passeo, elevation should return to the original 1946 design. And five, that the HLC would be in favor of the Planning Commission restricting occupancy to the proposed units or the number of allowed vehicles for the residents. Given the historic designation and HLC direction, the applicant proposes to leave the existing 18-square-foot balcony as is. When proposing to convert the office space to residential units, this means that Unit A would have limited open yard and Unit B would have none. The proposal is only required to provide private open yard for each of the units since it's an AUD project with less than four units in a non-residential zone. Both units would be required to have 72 square feet of open yard with minimum dimensions of six feet by six feet. The existing balcony proposed to serve Unit A measures 18 square feet with an approximate dimension of eight foot six by two feet. Thus, an open yard modification is required. Before submitting the project, the applicant worked with the urban historian and initially considered altering the building by either recessing the passeo facade to create deck space for both units, or by adding additional balconies or altering the existing balcony. At the direction and input of the urban historian, the Historic Landmarks Commission, and Post-Hazelteins' report, these ideas were all abandoned in order to avoid historically -- impacts to a historically significant building. Another idea would be to look to the rooftop or the sides of the building. However, the building site is developed lot-line to lot-line. Further, the roof is largely inaccessible and full of rooftop equipment serving the existing restaurant and office space. There are some rooftop equipment changes proposed as part of this project, including new HVAC and skylights for the units, but access is not proposed to change in order to limit any exterior changes, again, that could affect the historical significance of the building. The applicant prepared the diagram on the screen here showing open areas near the project site. These areas include public open spaces like Alice Keck Memorial Gardens, the courthouse, and the Presidio State Park. The project site is also one block from a downtown waterfront shuttle stop, meaning that the residents would have access to other areas of open space that downtown Santa Barbara offers down at the waterfront, as well as State Street itself. To approve the open yard modification, the Planning Commission would need to make two findings. The first is that the project is consistent with the general purposes of the municipal code. And the second is that the modification is necessary to accomplish one of the following criteria: securing an appropriate improvement, preventing unreasonable hardship, creating development consistent with the neighborhood, or constructing affordable housing, and that's affordable by policy, not design. Staff is supportive of the open yard modification, given the site constraints, the lot being fully developed, access to open spaces in the area, and general plan policy and possible implementation actions that note, quote, "In order to ensure that a historic resource will be perpetuated, even if its historical use becomes obsolete or is discontinued, avoid the application or strict interpretation of regulatory codes and ordinances which might erode or alter its traditional or historical character," end quote. The open yard modification can be considered both in appropriate improvement on the lot and prevention of unreasonable hardship. Staff considers adding residential units and preserving the historical integrity of the building in appropriate improvement. Given the lot's level of development and considerable work that would be required to incorporate any additional open yard, which could possibly affect the historic designation, it is also prevention of unreasonable hardship. The project also requires a parking modification. There is currently no parking on-site because, as previously discussed, the lot is entirely built out. The existing parking requirement for all commercial development is nine spaces. The proposed parking requirement, including the two residential units, would also be nine spaces, it's just calculated a little differently. No bike parking is proposed for the two units at this time. There would be two required, however, the lack of these two required bike parking spaces is subject to a waiver from the Public Works Department during building permit plan check, not a modification like the vehicular spaces. Generally, non-conforming parking is allowed to continue, however, whenever a residential unit is established, conforming parking has to be provided for that unit pursuant to this code section on the screen here under Title 30. The existing non-conforming parking for the restaurant, the seven spaces, is allowed to continue and is not part of the modification request. Only the two residential parking spaces are part of this modification request. The applicant has attempted to find off-site parking for these proposed units. They've approached six businesses within 750 feet of the subject lot. None of them had parking spaces available for a long-term lease for residents. Downtown parking does not currently sell residential parking passes for city parking lots. Those spaces are meant to serve employees and customers. Employee parking passes, if these residents happened to be employed in this area, are available in nearby Lot 6 behind the Granada. Residential parking permits for street parking were also considered, but projects receiving parking modifications and AUD projects specifically that have reduced parking requirements typically have been conditioned to not be allowed to have these residential parking permits, and such a condition is included on this particular project. There's also precedent for modifications in the immediate area to allow projects to not provide any parking on-site and/or the creation of residential units. In 2006, the staff hearing officer approved a parking modification to allow no on-site parking for the creation of two residential condominiums in the Granada Tower. In that case, parking demand was not increasing, and the downtown location with access to resources was cited in the approval. Also in 2006, the staff hearing officer approved a parking modification to allow expansion of a restaurant with no additional parking. That site was also built out like the subject lot is. Parking availability in Lot 6, where there are currently monthly employee parking passes available, was cited in the approval of that project. And finally, back in 1994, the modification hearing officer approved setback modifications to allow a residential unit on the top floor of 1321 State Street, two doors down from the subject project. The project did not require a parking modification at the time it was permitted. It was permitted under Title 28, not the Title 30, which is in effect now. This project is before the Planning Commission because of the finding on the screen here that has to be made for a parking modification under Title 30 effective as of October 2017. Parking modifications can go to the staff hearing officer if parking demand could be met. However, in this case, parking demand could not be met on-site. Title 30 introduced the second option to allow projects to pursue a parking modification at a higher review authority, given unusual or unique circumstances of a particular case. Both transportation and zoning staff have reviewed the proposed parking modification and are supportive of it for the following reasons. One, the parking requirement, despite the change of use, would remain the same. Two, precedent within a one-block radius, allowing for both no parking on-site and the creation of residential units. Three, the built-out nature of the site and the historic integrity of the building. And four, consistency with general plan policies and possible implementation actions that discuss, quote, "Given limited remaining land resources, the city shall encourage the development of housing on vacant infill sites and the redevelopment of opportunity sites, both in residential zones and as part of mixed-use development in commercial zones," end quote. And also, quote, "Support zoning modification approvals for parking and setbacks to allow more changes of use for historic properties and allow more flexible building code compliance alternatives," end quote. We also have Rob Dayton here from the Transportation Division here to discuss parking and the AUD program in general.
Thank you. Ms. Swanson, I just, I came to just speak a little bit on this issue, and thank you for including me in the staff report. It's really interesting, in 1994, when we supported two doors down, the housing unit, which is adjacent, on top of a building adjacent to the Arlington Theater breezeway there, the resident, the doorway is actually behind the kiosk. We were thinking, well, you know, it's, I guess this could work, you know, at that time. Now, when you fast-forward decades later, we're talking about general plan policies that say that we really, really need housing downtown. That was the big push for the general plan. As a matter of fact, the average unit density program was targeting downtown, however, only 33% of the proposals from average unit density have actually been proposed in the Central Business District. So, we actually delighted that someone wants the two units, and of course, parking is the issue, and we're talking, we have talked, spoken with the Housing Task Force recently, the Council of Planning Commission, Housing Task Force, John Campanella was on that. Who else? I think it was, yeah, Commissioner Lodge, about reducing parking requirements in the downtown to attract residential units. So, we are very supportive of this. Some of the other reasons that were not mentioned is the average unit density is workforce housing. Of course, it's going to be the newest housing and perhaps the most expensive, but if you don't provide parking, then it is, you cut down the demand for that unit, and therefore, it cannot rent for as much. And then if someone doesn't have cars, a car, in 2017, the average American spends, spent $8,500 a year on a vehicle. That's $700 that can go towards rent per month if they don't own a vehicle. So, it really fits with the model of the desirability. But even more than that, what we need downtown is people. We need people living downtown. We need, you know, the open space that wasn't mentioned, obviously, is State Street. That's where we want people to walk and be. Yes, there'll be a transition point. You know, this is only two units we're talking about, so it's not a big, it's not a one-giant leap for mankind by any means. But it does, it does mean incremental people, a change to people living downtown, which is very important. And hopefully, the conversation that comes to you sooner than later, hopefully, where we get to talk about more residential downtown and how we use parking as the thing that makes that happen will be a part of that rich conversation. So, I appreciate the time.
Just to wrap things up, the project also requires an environmental finding from the Planning Commission as the review authority. As outlined in the staff report, no project-specific significant environmental effects are anticipated from this proposed project, and the proposed residential density is consistent with the general plan. If approved by the Planning Commission, the project would still require project design and final approval from the Historic Landmarks Commission before going to the building permit stage. Both of those decisions would be appealable to the city council. And finally, with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the project and make the required findings, as outlined in the submitted staff report, subject to the conditions of approval. That is the end of our presentation, and Rob and I are both available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Thank you, Mr. Dayton. I just ask my fellow commissioners in respect of Mr. Dayton's time, if you have any questions of him now, let's ask them, and then he can depart if he wants to. Okay, we start with Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rob, so I, I'm going to try and figure out a question in here on a statement, but I don't disagree with everything you said on the plus side. What pains me in the staff report...
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan.
...is that we have to grant a modification to get there. And I know, I know exactly your response, and that the, that the city is not in a position to even, if there's a car involved, to obligate a space at the Granada Garage, which is half-open in advance of that. And the only alternative we have is to let the tenant, the eventual tenant, come back and ask us for a space, a rental space, which is the same as a commuter driving into downtown every month. We have no other program. So, what the heck can we do to help that move along quicker? I was really dismayed at Tuesday's conversation for hours and hours, that the parking, the parking rah-rah wasn't more than just your presentation on putting the gate down and getting to that point. How do we get there when we're looking at stuff like this, and then the next guy comes and he's four spots, or the next guy comes and he's six, or you take this same project and put it down in the funk zone, and nobody wants to grant the funk zone anything? So, how do, how do I, how do we help you get to that point where you're putting the gate down at night and you're encouraging downtown residents to take their cars out of the city during the daytime and bring them back at nighttime? What do we do to replicate this positively?
So, I think, I think what you're asking about is how do we, as the downtown parking district, help the residents come in, those with cars?
Yes, you have no method now.
So, I have to start, I always have to start, and I know people don't like hearing this.
I know you're going to, I know, I'm one of those people.
Most of the people ask questions and think about projects from their own standpoint, and the reality is, is that most of the decision-makers and also staff are not in positions where we don't own cars, and we have lifestyles that are very urban downtown lifestyles where we don't actually need a car. And the type of people that we do want downtown, this is my, always my lead-in, is the people who are not driving somewhere to go to work. They're actually, they're, they're down, they're in the, what I used to refer to as my six-block radius when I lived in the 300 block of Ortega, I just, my life was six blocks, six-block radius diameter. And that's the type of person we want living downtown. However, to answer your question, we do have ample resources. 3,300 spaces are empty in the evening. This problem, the transition, if you will, between now and some future where car ownership is very little because of autonomous vehicles, we have plenty of ways to get there in that transition.
But the way is not, the way, or I don't think the way is through modifications. The way is through some process, through some logistical change in how you're managing the parking structures and offering either a resident who really has a car, and it's this transition period, or a resident who fits another profile that they're going out of town in the day and coming back at night type of thing. So, how do, how do we help get to that, too? So, that's part of the enticement to build downtown, rather than a potential hurdle sitting here today looking for modification.
Chair Wiscum, Commissioner Jordan, we're kind of diverging from a path that's been agendized. I, I think if Rob can bring that back around to, to this particular project, or we can just limit it, then we're good.
So, referring to this project, Commissioner Jordan, so the modification could be avoided if we could give, in perpetuity, parking pass in the downtown parking, which is a public asset, which we're not prepared to recommend to you to do, and we don't think that that's necessary. It's unfortunate there's a modification today. And, and for the, for the other process, we'd like to get a place, get to a place, me more than anyone else, perhaps, to us changing the ordinance so that we can have it in Lufy.
Okay. So, I'll get off this. The reason I bring this up is, for me, there's a internal conflict in the findings and an assumption to placing the goals of the general plan over the findings and modification. And so, that's why I'm asking for this information. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you. Just to confirm, this project is in the Central Business District, which, regardless of the AUD program, because it's mixed-use, it would only require one parking space per residential unit, not based on number of bedrooms, it's just based on a specific unit. The AUD program would be equivalent, one space per unit. So, there's no real change in that part of the analysis that we would be doing, right? The, just to confirm, as far as the public parking lots, somebody, we're not currently giving out passes that would accommodate this project, but someone on their own, of course, could park all day for $15, is that, and park overnight at this point as well?
That's correct. Commissioner Campanella.
Per day.
More than $15, but if they did park all day, they could do that. And then they can also come and park in the evening for free and then leave in the morning.
For free, you said? How does that work?
Yeah, they just, they can drive in, if they drive in after the kiosk closes.
At what time is that?
I won't give away too much, but they, they can drive in after the kiosk closes.
I'm paying close attention. Christmas shopping, you know.
Don't go too far on that. But they, they can stay all night in, in the, in the garage, and then they can leave in the morning. And the gate goes down at about 8 o'clock.
Okay. And I think, specific to this property, if we could, one, one thing that might be coming up, I think, was a proposal, may we charge a fee to a developer on new product that perhaps could help with...
It would be an in-lufy for the, for the parking space.
For the construction and operational purposes?
And, and more transportation downtown.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, questions for Mr. Dayton? I think, I think we've covered it. Thank you very much for coming, and thanks for answering our questions.
Thank you. And then also, just before I go, I just want to introduce you Jessica Grant, who's going to be your, your humble servant replacing Daniel Gullett. So, she's running the Transportation Planning Section.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Welcome, Ms. Grant. Good to see you. Okay, we are going to, I failed to actually talk about the process. We do have a speaker slip here. So, we're now going to get a presentation from Ms. Naylor and whoever on your team wants to talk. I'm going to give you 20 minutes. I don't assume you need it, no, but, okay. And then... And then, then we're going to, after the presentation, we'll open up public comment and hear public comment, and then we'll close it, and it'll be back to the commission for any additional questions and deliberations. So, Ms. Naylor, welcome. Come on up. And I put that, that, that little ticker there is-
Twenty minutes.
Well, it's just our standard. And you'd be amazed, sometimes you end up going there, so, okay.
Thank you. Chair Wiskom, commissioners, my name is Suzette Naylor, and I'm the architect for the project. And actually, Rob Dayton's explanation has chopped off a whole part of mine, so I'll be even shorter than I intended to be. So SB Accelerate was in its infancy when I first approached staff about the feasibility of this project. And we have evolved, as you've heard, and benefited from all our interactions with both HLC and other appointed representatives, and every single staff member we've met with has been encouraging and very helpful. This project, and you have all been talking about this basically, provides a small window into how this current general plan thinks about, and as it pertains to housing, in the EPV in downtown, through adaptive reuse. As we know, the challenge for any general plan is to articulate the goals and policies of its community, but the task, the continuing task, is implementation. Through reurbanism, which is the reuse, and the reinvestment to revitalize downtowns, we want to insert a small slice of domestic life into our downtown with an environmentally responsible and preservation-compliant project. This building is in the AUD doughnut, but it's in a compliance doughnut hole, due primarily to its existing context of physical constraints, and which arise primarily from the historicity of this project, which is absolutely the facet of EPV. As planners, you're always looking backwards and forwards, and this is where we go into the Rob Dayton thing. I was going to talk about the parking mods in 1995, and you should take a look at that project above Indigo, which is adjacent to the Arlington and two doors down from us. It's really very nice. So after that wash, looking forward, the concept of resilience in the upcoming 2017 guidelines for the general plan is not a new one in terms of sustainability, but what is interesting in terms of its thinking, its statement, is that planning in general must change. Not only should we be incorporating adaptive planning in response to changing climate conditions, but every decision we make should ideally support and encourage not only the survival of a resource, but also look to create systemic conditions that allow it to thrive in the face of change. That's what you've just been discussing. Much of the relevance of this building, I think, lies in the fact in its massing and facade being so well-designed to provide itself as a supporting character role at both Paseo and State Street. As part of an ensemble originally envisioned for the Arlington, with the public market in Arlington Village, this ensemble has begun to change. I'd like to quote William Murtough's statement about preservation, "And for the word preservation, insert architecture and/or planning." He was the first keeper of the National Register of Historic Places. He said, "It has been said that at its best, preservation engages the past in a conversation with the present over a mutual concern for the future." That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. Appreciate it. Okay, does any, anyone else on your project team want to speak, or, okay? Nope?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, okay, fine. Okay, well, you've got, I think that was a record. I think you get the record. I wish I had a medal up here, but you have about 16 minutes left if you possibly needed it. Okay. We're going to open up public comment. We have one speaker slip, Frances Peters. And let me just get this clock reset here. You're going to have two minutes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members, my name is Frank Peters. I'm with SB Bike, that's how many people know me. Fewer people know my involvement with Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District. I'm a member of the hearing board there. And I earned that appointment on the strength of my credentials in combating air pollution. And how does that tie into this issue? I have no problem with the parking minimums here. I live on the same block. These will be my new neighbors. I'm able to walk to everything I want to do and ride my bicycle. But I wanted to alert everyone to the restaurant below this new housing, these two housing units, burns wood. And wood, most people don't understand, don't know, is toxic. Burning wood is toxic. It creates the very small particles known as PM 2.5. Young people, older people are particularly vulnerable to that. Children in the womb can be affected, and I think whoever is going to reside there needs a referral to a pulmonologist as a kind of a move-in special. Anyway, that's my wish, is, is there any opportunity to communicate with the resident, with the restaurant below regarding their use of burning wood? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, that closes public comment. We have no other slips, I don't think, on this item. Okay. So it's going to be back to the commission for questions and comments. Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question on the, the number of bedrooms within each of the two units. It's a one-bedroom proposal at this point. If the, in the future, the owner of the property were able to get a, according to proper specifications, get a second bedroom in, have a window put in, et cetera, is that, would that add any change to what we're doing today or the project description that would require a new modification? Or do they have a right to do that, just subject to going to the building department?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campanella, if they did change either unit to have two bedrooms, it would change the open yard requirement, and so it would require review of, is it in substantial conformance with anything that gets approved today? Is it a new modification? In regards to parking under the AUD, it's still just the one space, even with two bedrooms, unless that gets changed in the future. And then if it were changed in the future, it would be the same process. Is it in substantial conformance? Is it a new modification? And we'd have to look at it at the time it's submitted.
Okay. The, at the time it was submitted, okay, parking, same thing. So it sounds, it sounds like, under the AUD, of course, or also the underlying, I'm sorry, also being in the mixed-use project in the downtown CBD district, if it did add another bedroom, there wouldn't be, like you said, additional parking requirements or anything like that. It would be the same. So the, the only thing really sounds like it's open area would be part of a modification with the rest being maybe just documentation that nothing significant had changed? Is that the way it would work?
Correct. So with, it's multi-unit residential, every time you add a bedroom, the open yard changes up to a certain number of bedrooms, and then it's just the same. But with parking, as the AUD ordinance is written right now, one versus two-bedroom, it's still just the one parking space per unit.
Okay. Second question would be on the, we're talking about residential units, but I believe this is being processed under the, is this being processed under high-density or medium-density under the AUD program? Or overlay? Which one of the three? I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campanella, it's high-density. So theoretically, they could be offered for sale, but as we're processing it right now, they are rental units. If they did propose them to be for-sale units, they would be held to different development standards. With condos and things like that, there's different requirements for storage, for laundry facilities, different parking requirements. They're entirely separate development standards. So if the project description were to change in that regard, it most likely would result in new modifications.
Right now, the conditions say residential units, so they, we're not limiting it to rental units as we would be under the, say, the priority overlay of the AUD. Since it's high-density, it could either, prospectively, it could be for-sale or for rent. It would be up to the owner, but they'd have to come back and reprocess to satisfy all those other requirements, including a proper condo plan, et cetera.
Correct.
If they wanted to. So we're not precluding it by limiting it to apartments, but we understand it's, there's a road to take if you did want to go for sale.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson, you are next.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open my comments by moving to approve the project, making the findings in the staff report, subject to the conditions in the staff report. I definitely think it's a good project downtown. I definitely support the modification.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I support the, you don't need a second before comments on the motion. I definitely support the modifications. And let's, let's expand this a little more broadly. I think this is one of the first, if not the first, of these downtown infill projects that people have been talking about for years. And if you look at it, here we are, making these people go through, getting a modification for parking and open yard in a downtown built-out urban area. That really doesn't make sense. If the city really wants this kind of help to revitalize State Street, get rid of the requirement to have to have a modification for an open yard in an urban area. Get rid of the modification requirement for having parking for buildings that don't have any capability for parking. So we're, we're talking about it, but nobody's actually doing anything about it. We're still doing business as usual. You got to get a modification. You make the people go through, asking all of the people in the neighborhood if they can take their cars, or if they have open yard and all that kind of stuff. It makes no common sense. That's my two cents on this. If you, if you want to hear anything further, contact me after the meeting.
Second, 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 all of what I just heard.
Madam Chair. Okay.
Yeah, well, we need to, we need to stop talking about it and start doing something about it. And, and just to get the modification costs these people tens of thousands of dollars. What's the point?
Madam Chair, I have questions still. Yeah, I, we, I think we all do, so, okay. Commissioner Schwartz, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My questions, both to staff, and then I'm going to ask Ms. Naylor to come back up, pertain specifically to the Historic Landmarks Commission comments from their meeting, and straw votes from their meeting of March 21st of this year. So I guess first to staff, or actually, maybe even to Ms. Osteringer on this, I'm looking at specifically Exhibit D in our packet. This is page four of 12, and it's the straw vote on six items. The first is, I hope this is not a rhetorical question, why are we having a design review commission comment on restaurant odors? That's, I can't even comprehend why we're asking for a straw poll vote on odors coming from an adjacent commercial property activity. Second, so that's the first, that's the first straw vote that was taken. Then we go down to the fifth straw vote, how many commissioners support restricting occupancy? I'm recalling from our many conversations with Assistant City Attorney Scott Vincent that we're not legally allowed to restrict the occupancy of these. So why was that allowed to be a straw vote? So this goes to some ongoing concerns that I've expressed from the dais before, and I would really like to see the City Attorney's Office help us scope these sorts of straw votes and deliberations appropriately. Do you have any comments for us and guidance, Ms. Osteringer?
Chair Wiskom, Commissioner Schwartz, you're correct that the odor is not within the design board's purview. You're also correct that the city cannot restrict the number of occupants in a residential unit. The City Attorney's Office is now fairly regularly staffing the design boards, with the exception of the single-family design board. We don't have the resources at this time to, to do all of them. I'd never be at my desk. So with, I think, a little more guidance from the City Attorney's Office, we will focus the decisions a little bit more narrowly.
Okay, thank you. And so the, the other side, or the flip side of my questions, just on those two items then, would you like to comment, Madam Chair, or would you just questions at this time?
No, I think you can go ahead. I think, I've got questions and comments, so, yeah, just go ahead and go for it.
Okay. So my companion comments to these questions, and it goes to staff, is, I would really like to see a more, more careful, more nuanced consideration of what finds its way, the content of what finds its way into staff reports and presentations. So when we look at, and this is not a criticism of you, Ms. Swanson, this is process, so I want, I want to be clear about that. When I look at Slide 6, which is the Historic Landmarks Commission, basically the contents of their straw votes from March 21 of this year, we have these items, restaurant owners, two units, open yard, original, occupancy. Where it's not appropriate for any decision-making body to weigh in on a subject or subjects, I really take issue with those actions finding their way into formal city documents. So I'm very pleased to hear the City Attorney's Office is going to move in and be a more proactive advisory resource to all of us. And so for today's purposes, and I'll just close with, with this comment, I can't say strike it from the record, you know, I'm not a judge, I'm, isn't a court of law. However, I will strongly encourage all of us to discount and set aside some of the commentary came, coming from the straw votes of HLC that are not relevant to the considerations and the findings that this Planning Commission needs to make today to, to provide direction back on this project, and I will be supporting Commissioner Thompson's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. I think we're to Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to thank Commissioner Thompson for saving me ranting, but that was obviously the, the crux of my questions. It, it is, it, it is just frustrating to have to offer up a modification for this action. And it'll be frustrating when you walk out there into the street and talk to other people who have issues with modifications for parking, either in the downtown area or in the, in the funk zone in particular, and, and they know that you're giving up a modification for, for the parking. It should, it should not be part of this process or approval. I agree with everything that Commissioner Thompson said. I also think the optics could be better in the staff report. The staff report problem, part, part, part that walks through the, the two modifications is the least supportive part of the staff report. The part that talks about the general plan policies is by far the most supportable part of this process, and they are at conflict with each other. Lots of parcels have constraints and shouldn't be changing their use and shouldn't be having to add to their parking. And to use that argument, just as an argument, just is in conflict with what should be happening at this particular site, in this particular area, and that's what makes the general plan policies all the more credible as the reason to approve this, rather than have to put this round thing in a square hole on the modification findings. So I'm supportive of this. I think it's a great idea. The only other comment I would have on the, on the bicycle waiver is, at some point as we do this, the city needs to figure out a place, ala the, I don't even know if the Granada Garage parking stall thing is still open. That was probably before its time. But as we work our way up and down State Street, and places do not have the ability to put covered or uncovered bicycle parking, there, the city needs to set, anticipate this and start figuring out a plan where to have a site for that, for a shared parking facility downtown, or many shared, smaller facilities downtown to accommodate that. So, thank you, Madam Chair. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Campanella, did you have something else?
I don't have a question, but I'm going to maybe come up with a proposal for a counter motion before we vote on it.
Okay.
So I'll wait for your question.
Yeah, what, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay. So, you know, we have a, a conditions of approval here. I'm, I'm in agreement with my fellow commissioners, and I, I'm in agreement with this parking modification request that costs you money. I think that's, that's a hardship that shouldn't be there. Housing and parking go together, and we gotta deal with it. But at any rate, enough said about that before I get in trouble. So I wanted to talk a little bit, and I think this is for Ms. Naylor, I wanted to talk a little bit about this access easement. Is it a right-of-way through the paseo? It's how you're going to access? I want to talk about your construction, and how you are planning on, in the conditions of approval, it says that, you know, your vehicles are going to park where, in a, in a spot that is approved by the Community Development Director. But I, I'd like to know what your plans are, because I'm a little bit concerned about your access to those two units is through that paseo, up those stairs. And do you have agreements in place that, that allow you to have vehicles in there during your three-month proposed construction period?
We only got as far as talking to Armstrong Construction, which of course has been dealing with Arlington Village and using that access easement. And his concept was that we, he would be parking on Sola if we were to use him, bringing all materials and equipment upstairs, storing them upstairs, and having nothing on the paseo. We are also figuring that it would take approximately three months to construct, allowing for intervals during which Opel may have its lunch and dinner service that will be quiet. So we've only gotten that far in terms of thinking that we have not asked for access or the right to use.
Okay, because it seems, you said, I think you said in your, in your letter that demolition would take about a week.
Yes.
I mean, there's, there's going to be a natural belief that you're going to have to, you're going to have to, you're going to have materials for some period of time stored out there on that paseo, I would imagine. And when I say stored, I'm not talking overnight, or it, it doesn't matter. It, it, you know, it could be for three hours, but...
Right. And I was just, I had actually, our site was that I was sort of looking at that steam cleaning van standing there for a couple of hours and thinking, hmm. So I, I don't know. We would have to talk to the Corwin family, of course.
Okay. And, and I guess I would ask, is this something that is applicable for the conditions of approval, that, that, that be satisfactorily worked out? Ms. DeBasky? I don't, I don't know. I'm kind of on the edge. Or Ms. Osteringer, what do you think?
With regards to the construction or the general access?
Yes, the, the construction, that's, that's the most disturbing part, and it's a short window of three months, but, you know, if it hasn't totally been worked out...
Well, I, I think that because there's an easement there, and I think it would be more appropriate left up to the, the property owners to negotiate.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Okay. And I was also asking about bicycle storage. I think, I think it's a shame you don't have it. I really do. Because you don't have parking if we approve this, so, you know, you don't have parking anyway, but, okay. And then the next question, HLC had a question about emergency egress from the units. Have you addressed that?
Yes, and this is one of the reasons why we couldn't have two bedrooms in there. I've got to get out those windows. We've only got two windows, and I can't put two bedrooms into the one window. So we will be using those windows per the historic code.
Okay, great. So that question has been answered. Okay. And let me just see if I have any more questions here. No, I think, I think that was pretty much all I had. I will say, I think this is a great start. We need to start somewhere. I commend you for the project. I also commend you for, and the owners, for putting in two units. I think that's, that's really great. I think it's actually the right fit for the building and, and the spaces, rather than one two-bedroom apartment. So how you got there is a little convoluted, but at any rate, so I'll be supporting the motion. And I think Commissioner Campanella had something else, and then Commissioner Lodge. Thank you.
Thank you. Today, we saw there were three precedents that were set back in time, were referred to, and I guess they're all different. Mr. Dayton was describing one that, I, I didn't understand, there was some thing that you couldn't do it today, or whatever, but I see this as going on the list of four. That'll be a list of four precedents, or it could be on a list of one. And I'd prefer it to be on a, a list of one, by making this approval as general as possible in the findings. We may see other properties that do not, that are not historic properties, or maybe they're next to a historic property, or maybe they didn't survey the area for parking. So we're not really establishing a guideline for those who want to develop, redevelop within existing structures on State Street. Many are not historical. Maybe a facade looks nice, but it's, it's an old commercial building that really doesn't pass up to, pass the muster. So what I'm going to suggest is, and one more comment on the windows. I see Mr. Cornell is here. I'm going to quote him, who I think quoted me, that if we're looking, we're looking at getting people downtown and retrofitting buildings, density, older density rules are one thing, but it really depends on the number of windows that you can get into a structure and rehab it. Window equals bedroom, or sleeping area, or however you manipulate it around the perimeter, front and back of a property. You, you may have the ability to do that in the future yourself. So maybe, maybe not. But what I'm saying is that I think we have to be more open-minded on the type of housing that goes into retrofitted properties versus the standard rules that have applied so far on density. Aside, given that, I, I would propose a counter motion, which would take, if it's, if it passes muster, which staff and our city attorney, where we pick up the last lines of the two modifications. On the parking modifications, this is on page 11 of the staff report. And maybe this doesn't work, but I'll show you what my feelings are about the subject anyway, even if it doesn't. On parking modifications, first paragraph, I would look at our findings being that general plan policies encourage housing in the downtown area, and flexible development standards, including a reduction in parking. On the open yard modification, I would go down the last sentence again. The location of the project on State Street in the downtown area would allow residents to access public open yards and entertainment opportunities within walking distance and within affordable public transportation routes. We can include such as the downtown waterfronts. But that's getting particular, and I'll probably end it at routes. Anyway, that's what I would propose, in order to make this as flexible as possible, try to accomplish the goals that we have for these type of projects, and not limited to a precedent that cannot really be used because of the specificity of the details of the modifications that were made, and it really couldn't be used in any other case, except maybe by reference. So I, I'm not going to vote for the current motion, but that, if, if I had, if I could see my other commissioners were in favor, and the first motion didn't pass, I'd, I would come up with a substitute motion, just including the last lines of findings B and C.
So are, are you, are you proposing that those be in the findings?
Correct.
Okay. I think in different words, they are in the findings, but...
No, they are, but also, our findings are based on many other aspects, okay, which would not set a precedent, and would be specific to this project. So I want to make it as general as possible on why we're coming up with the parking modification and open yard modification that could be used by other projects, and are not controversial and not site-specific, I feel. And I, I'd leave that up to our council.
Chair Wiscom, Commissioner Campanella, the, the findings need to set forth the reasons that are articulated in the code sections. I'm not quite sure that if you remove everything, that it would make the appropriate findings. I'd leave that to Ms. DeBasky. I will say, the city's not bound by precedent, so long as there's some sort of rationale of why something wouldn't work. I think in this case, the staff has done a good job of outlining project-specific findings as to, to why this modification should be granted.
Chair Wiscom and Commissioner Campanella, I would concur with what Ms. Osteringer just said. We do want the findings to be legally adequate to, for what the modification itself requires. So the line about the general plan is additional information, but it doesn't necessarily make the finding that needs to be made per our zoning ordinance.
Okay. So Chuck, what about the historical resources part? Again, I'm looking at potentially another property, trying to follow suit. Is the historical resource finding for the modifications, is that required or not required?
Chair Wiscom and Commissioner Campanella, no, that might not necessarily be required. It certainly adds more to the finding and makes it, I would say, more defensible for this particular project. And any other project that comes in under our current rules does need its own modification. And so we would need to make site-specific findings for that one. So I don't think stripping this down to make it more general is going to help other projects down the line. Just so that you're aware, there is a separate finding that could be used for historic properties in terms of making their findings. The applicant chose to submit under this unique circumstances, given that, I think partly at the time, the building hadn't been designated historic. So it's ultimately up to the planning commission what findings you want to include, but that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Well, given that, I'll go along with the motion that's being made. I, I would like, perhaps, in our comments, then...
Okay. I just, I wanted to just draw your attention, if I'm understanding what Commissioner Campanella's saying, I just want to draw your attention to the pre-app. And on page two, where it goes, decisions, conclusions, if parking modifications were presented to the show, the findings would need to be made. And number two is, is, it's, it's an and/or situ, it's an or situation. And number two is, a physical hardship exists that would otherwise prevent reasonable use of the property for an existing single-unit residence, including but not limited to extreme slope, blah, 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 blah. And then there's another one down there. Are you looking for more general findings, like, like kind of what's listed in the pre-app? There, there's one on open yard, too.
I understand what I, I was going to the extreme relative to the, not extreme, but I was looking at section nine, that we find the following. I was just trying to get it down just to the bottom-line comments. If we can't do that as part of our approval...
Okay, yeah.
That's fine. I would like the minutes to show, perhaps, under my comments, that I suggested this as far as applicability for projects that are going to be downtown, and maybe as we look through what procedures and policies that we come up with for determining whether a project can be modified, otherwise modified within an existing structure, maybe we can get to a point where we have specific zone, in our zoning ordinance, let's say, we can point to specific general comments, such as the two that are here, at the last sentence that I quoted.
Well, okay. If, if you want to do that, I think Ms. Osteringer says it's, it's on a case-by-case basis. It's not, we're not, we're not bound in this decision to make the same decision on another property. So I think, you know...
Well, I'm, I'm more, more or less maybe leaning towards future policy, okay?
I understand, but, yeah.
If those comments could be put in, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Let the record reflect Commissioner Campanella's comments, then. Okay. Commissioner Lodge, you had something to say? Yep. I hope it's on the windows.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I will be voting to approve this project, but I am concerned about livability issues, as I think HLC was. And this is a different, new kind of housing downtown, and I hope that the owners will make very clear to the tenant, prospective tenants, that there is, there are going to be smells and smoke and all these other things, and perhaps, as one gentleman pointed out, that smoke is not all that good for their health. It would only be, seem to me, to be fair to the tenants. And, and we have, in our ordinance, open yards requirements to provide some livability in these units. And so I, I don't think it, and it's important. And it's a different issue when this, we're talking downtown, but I still think that it is important to make the units as livable as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins, you had something else?
Yeah, thank you. I was, I didn't really want to weigh in, because I think we've, you know, taken our liberties with the project that's pretty simple. But on Commissioner Campanella's point, I'm with you on that. If you would have made that motion first, I would have seconded it. But again, I think, given, you know, circumstances today, what was on the agenda, we have another project behind this, we got to move on. Also, you know, the livability issue is, is a concern. You know, tenants make their own choices. They don't buy these, they rent them, they can get out of them after a month or a year, and maybe that helps lower the rent if it's too smoky.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Thompson?
I was just going to say, in response to Commissioner Campanella's point, this is a bigger discussion, I think, that perhaps, maybe we ought to try to see if we can introduce regarding how we fix this downtown issue. You know, I would even go so far as to say, in the CBD, that we just have a blanket approval for no parking, no open yard. But that's something for another discussion, other than today.
Okay, thank you. Don't want to wave or waiver off the agenda today. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Do we, does everyone understand the motion and the second? Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And, and this project is appealable to city council within the next 10 days. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break while the applicant for the second project sets up. Thank you. The planning commission meeting for December 6, 2018, and we're on to item 3C, which I'll read into the record. It's an application of Trish Allen of Suzanne Elidge Planning and Permitting Services, agent for 815 De La Vina LLC, at 208 West De La Guerra Street, 809 De La Vina Street, and 815 De La Vina Street. General plan designation, commercial high residential priority housing overlay for a new 38-unit residential project developed under the average unit size density incentive program. The project requires planning commission conceptual review to provide the applicant staff and Historic Landmarks Commission with comments only on the proposed development. So, yes. And we have Commissioner Campanella? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have to excuse myself on this item and step down, because I own a property within 500 feet of the proposed project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll miss you. Okay. Mr. Busk... Mr. Busk, would you like to introduce staff, please? Thanks.
Thank you, Chair Wycombe. The staff report will be presented by Kathleen Kennedy.
Welcome, Ms. Kennedy. Anytime.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you said, the project address is 208 West De La Guerra Street. It's a corner lot in 809 and 815 De La Vina Street. The reason why we're here today is that this is a concept review hearing. It's required for a project that's being proposed under the Average Unit Size Density Incentive Program because this project requires HLC approval and not Planning Commission, and that the lot size is greater than 15,000 square feet. And it's also being developed under the priority housing overlay area, and it fits under this because it's a rental housing project. And the purpose of the hearing today is to receive and provide comments to the HLC on design compatibility and the general plan consistency. Here is a vicinity map of the project site. There are three lots. 208 West De La Guerra is right here on the corner, 809 De La Vina Street, and 815 De La Vina Street. And the project involves the merger of these three lots. Here are some existing street views. This is along De La Vina Street. The house to the right here is what's called the Otte House, and this is on 815 De La Vina. And to the left is the commercial building. So, it's moved down De La Vina Street. Here you'll see the commercial building. And then on the corner are the residential units that are existing. The larger one is a five-unit apartment building and then a one-unit cottage. And then looking along De La Guerra Street, again, here's the apartment building on the right. This is the project site, and then this is an adjacent mixed-use project next door. The proposed project includes the demolition of all structures on the site except the Otte House. It involves the relocation of the Otte House to the corner of the project site, and that includes four studios, one one-bedroom and one-two-bedroom residential units. The proposed project includes the construction of a new 38,000-square-foot building, which would include 32 units comprising of 10 studios and 22 one-bedroom units. With the demolition and the relocation, this results in a net increase of 26 residential units on the project site. It also includes 40 parking spaces for vehicles and 40 bicycle parking spaces. Just some statistics from the zoning ordinance compliance section of the staff report. The allowance for the priority housing overlay density in this area is between 37 and 63 dwelling units per acre. This particular project is proposing 57 dwelling units per acre. They would be allowed to have between 25 and 42 units. This project is proposing 38 units. And based on that, they would be allowed to have, as a maximum average unit size, between 811 and 970. This project has an average unit size of 565 square feet, and they range from 291 to 901 square feet for each unit. The building height requirement is 45 feet. The proposed project has, at the second story, which is closest to De La Vina, has a maximum height of 27 feet, and the third-story portion is about 36 feet. Here is the project location over to the left. It shows that this is in the commercial high residential general plan area. And as we said, it's in the priority housing overlay area, again, located right here. Give you a brief summary here of the site plan. So, this is De La Guerra Street up on top, and along the side here is De La Vina. On the first floor would be the one-way entrance to the parking area. There are 40 parking spaces proposed. Along De La Guerra, there would be both exit and entrance area here. This is the Otte House to be relocated from, was in this area or is in this area now, would be relocated to the corner here. Here's the second floor. All the units have, first floor of the units here and the second floor, and then a portion of them have, there are units in the back here in the third story. So, you can see how there's no third story in the front, on the De La Vina frontage area. Just briefly about the elevation. So, this is the De La Vina Street elevation. Again, the Otte House has been relocated here to the corner. This is one building to, to look like two buildings. They are connected in the front here, about 27 feet tall, and then taller in the back with the third story. The building to the right here is an existing adjacent residence. Here's the De La Guerra Street elevation. Again, the Otte House at the corner. And then looking back at the project beyond, not right on De La Guerra, but beyond there, the rear elevation. So, this is, this would be De La Guerra Street here on the right. This would not be seen. You can see the outline of the buildings that would block the view of these buildings. These are at the same plane, and then this one here is, because L-shaped lot is actually forward much more than this one to the right. And then the northwest elevation. So, this is if you are standing at the 817 De La Vina property, looking along that elevation. And then again, the outline of those buildings on that property is shown. Here to the left is De La Vina. And then the southeast elevation. This is if you were on De La Guerra Street. This runs parallel to that, but the Otte House would be here in the corner in front of that. And then the other buildings along De La Guerra would be in the front. So, this project has been under review since at least 2017. We had a pre-application review team review by staff that occurred. That was on the previous project. The HLC did review during four concept reviews, a previous project in 2017. That project had four stories. It had some more units. It was larger. It had parking stackers as part of the proposal. And then in 2018, the project came back and was redesigned. It underwent three concept reviews. At one point, the HLC stated that the compatibility analysis criteria was met, except for the third-story massing in the rear. So, the applicant worked on that and came back at another hearing in August. And at that point, the HLC stated that the project achieved sufficient reduction in size, bulk, and scale, and said that this could move on to Planning Commission for concept review. HLC also reviewed the Phase One Historic Structures and Sites Report. And in that report, which was accepted by the HLC, they evaluated all the structures on site and concluded that the Otte House is eligible to be designated as a structure of merit, which it has since, that's been done, and recommended a Phase Two report. So, this Phase Two report was prepared, and it was accepted by the HLC since the staff report was written, accepted on the 28th. It evaluated the impacts of the project, including the relocation of the Otte House on the historic structures on the site, including the Otte House and adjacent to the site. The conclusion was that the impacts would be less insignificant. So, staff is requesting that the Planning Commission provide comments on the consistency with the general plan for this project. We've included applicable policies in the staff report, and I've summarized some of them here. In regard to the land use element, we're looking at the location of the project site, the provision of rental housing being within the priority housing overlay area, the size, bulk, and scale of the project, and compatibility with the neighborhood. In regard to the housing element, applicable policies related to new housing, increased density, and preserving some existing housing. In regard to historic resources element, this project does preserve the historic resource of the Otte House as part of the project. In regard to environmental resources element, there are provisions regarding protecting visual resources and providing electric vehicle charging stations within projects. And finally, in the circulation element, addressing alternative transportation opportunities and secure bicycle parking. This time, we'd like you to consider comments. We'd like by majority vote these questions to be answered. Is the project consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan? Is the size, mass, bulk, and scale and height appropriate for its location and for this neighborhood? And if there are any additional comments from the commission, we'd appreciate them. That concludes my presentation. I'd like to say that we have HLC member Grumbine here to provide some comments from the HLC. And also Nicole Hernandez, our urban historian, is in a meeting, but she will be here at 3:30. If you have any specific historic questions, you can save those for her when she arrives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Appreciate it. Mr. Grumbine, welcome. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Chair and planning commissioners. So, as was stated, true to our form, we've beaten up on this project for a couple of years now. But Brian's a good support. So, we've seen this, the project, multiple times. We analyzed the Historic Structures Report. We accepted it, I think it was eight to one, this last meeting. And the historians as well responded to some of the care that we wanted to both the Otte House as a historic structure and then as their analysis of the project as a whole in relationship to the Otte House and to the, actually, the sort of the bigger urban fabric that we asked of them as well. So, those were all analyzed, and we accepted it. And so, that has been sort of the journey. There was a response, a very good response from what we saw at the beginning to what we saw, what we saw this last time, and as well with the story polls as I was there. It seems to be playing out according to what we have seen of the project in terms of its mass, bulk, and scale and relationship to the neighborhood. So, with that, if there's any questions or...
Yes. Commissioner Schwartz has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Grumbine, for being here.
And actually, could I jump in one last thing? Because of the last item from before, the comment of, I just wanted to mark that for the record, that was in March, was it March of this year? And there has been a lot of help from the, from council as to what our purview is and what our purview isn't for various things. And it's been a very, we've been, we've learned a lot, and we've, we're regularly asking help and weighing in on what we actually can be saying and for, what we can be weighing in on for and why. So, it's been, I want to report on that project just because it was an earlier shot.
Yes, you know, that's one of my hot buttons.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grumbine, for being here. So, for better or worse, I've watched all eight HLC hearings on this project. Not live, but on replay.
Yeah.
And in taking some notes on the journey that this project has been on through HLC, I have some questions for you, if you can comment.
Sure. I'll give them my best shot.
On behalf of the, well, one of your comments in particular, so I wanted to find out if you feel that there's been satisfactory progress made. You asked for greater gaps, kind of more breathing room between the buildings, breaking up the linearity and so forth. Is there any further comment you want to make on that?
Yeah. And if my memory with that is correct, and I haven't reviewed the tapes recently, only just the last tape. But that was especially to do with when we weren't satisfied with how the back portion of this last design was, because it was all one singular rectangular mass. And so, we asked for a breakup, and when the breakup happened, it actually, it helped everything read as sort of separate masses. And so, yeah, that was, it was, I think it was at that point that I personally made that vote or step to be accepting it. And I think that was the shift that happened once we were happy with it, that sort of mass breakup in the back. The other mass before was four stories, and it was very, there was many commissioners that were not acceptable of it, but it got worked and reworked to the point where I think the, almost all are finding it acceptable.
Okay. Very good. And then, again, to some of the meeting minutes from these hearings, I'm not really clear why habitability or livability continues to be discussed. As I briefly discussed with Assistant City Attorney Osteringer, I don't find, I haven't found on the city's website, a definition for livability or habitability. And I had to go to the California Building Codes actually to find that, so it's really code-driven. So, I'm concerned about, and I'm unclear about why the HLC is without any clear and consistent definitions discussing and providing direction on housing development proposals with this term that's not defined. So, I don't know if you have any comment about livability and habitability in that regard, but it came up numerous times in the HLC hearings on this project.
Yes.
And I don't know from an, I'll get to the applicant. Yeah.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, I'm going to save Commissioner Grumbine.
Thank you.
We're working on that.
Okay. Work in progress.
It's a work in progress. It's just, you know, there's a culture, I think, that might have been there at the board.
Okay.
So, the attorney's office is working to help narrow the scope and explain the scope.
Okay. I'm much encouraged by the work in progress update. Thank you. And so, I know you have much to do today, and you probably want to head out. Is there anything else? I don't want to keep you. Any other updates from, so the most recent meeting, let me look. Number eight was actually just last month. That was November 14th. Any specific highlights that you, since we're not going to go back through all these minutes together?
Yeah, that was, that meeting was to especially review the archaeology report and the, and the historian, what was it? Was that? No, that was, there was one meeting after that. There's, the last meeting was the archaeology report and historians' report, Phase Two, that analyzed the project in relationship. Before, it was looking at the Phase One, their analysis of the Otte House itself and the analysis of the urban landscape. And so, both of those reports were resolved to our satisfaction. We asked for additional information, and they came back with it. And we got very specific about windows, about plumbing on the outside of the building, about when a certain portion may or may not have been built or added on. And being very competent historians, they were able to give reasons why they were guessing a thing was happening at a certain point, because you never know unless you have good, you know, historic photos or something like that.
Yeah.
So, it was sort of, it's sort of a bit of a forensic guesswork, but they were able to answer all of our questions to a satisfactory level. So, we were able to accept their report.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grumbine.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. I think Commissioner Thompson was next.
Hi, Anthony. When you guys approved the moving of the Otte House to the corner, have you been working with the architect to develop the facade and the finishes on intervening buildings, the new buildings that are going to be going between the two historic buildings to make sort of a compatible streetscape there? In other words, you see what I mean? Now, you're going to have two older houses bookending the new building. And it would be nice if the new building was architecturally compatible with the older buildings, so as not to detract from the two historic buildings.
Yeah. So, that actually has been part of the whole design question. And early on, one of the, or first times we saw it, it was sort of a mishmash, like literally the first or second time. It was a mishmash of all different styles. There were some craftsmen thrown in there, some Victorian. And we really weren't happy at all with how it was going. Now, at least we're, in terms of the mass, bulk, and scale, and the findings of this last report, and I kind of zeroed in this, because I think it's still going to be part of the discussion, but the findings of the last report were that the proposed design of the new buildings did not create a negative impact on the actual Otte House.
Right.
And that street frontage and that. So, that part doesn't necessarily mean it has to be that exact expression of architecture, you know, exactly as it is, because that hasn't been reviewed or approved yet. But it means that the way the analysis of the style that it was proposed was not offensive, basically, and to sort of, you know, make a bad mangly mess of it. So, that was what we approved. So, it's not that we necessarily think that's the best or only way that it could be done and expressed, but that it wasn't hurting the historic resource to be that.
So, you're still...
So, the refinement of the architecture is still part of it, but the, but in terms of the... So the refinement of the architecture is still part of it, but in terms of the, we did make positive comments about the findings of mass, bulk, scale, about neighborhood compatibility and those kind of general, more general things. And we didn't approve anything yet, of course, but we did make findings that it was generally good enough to kind of move on, especially the mass, bulk scale, which is always the big question, and that we were comfortable at that level, so.
Okay, so more refinements potentially in work as it goes through the rest of the process.
Yeah, what we've also learned in the last couple of months is that, you know, design approval really is that locking in.
Right.
And then the final being, you know, it's just showing how you're meeting what you designed at that first round, which has been some confusion in the past, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you. So Anthony, stay right there, because I think what you're talking about is my question for staff at the end of your section on historic resources element. Fourth, fifth paragraph, you say the project is potentially consistent with the historic resources element policies based on what I hear Anthony saying is ongoing review of the Phase Two study. So procedurally, they've made findings about mass, bulk and scale, but they're coming, they'll go back for more discussion as it relates to the Phase Two study to make these final findings for the historic resources element compatibility. And then that's their role, or is that our role?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Higgins, so when I wrote this report, they hadn't gone back yet to the HLC. So they had gone back on the 14th, they returned on the 28th, the report had already been written. So between then, they have received or accepted the Phase Two report.
Accepted and made a finding, or help me with who makes that finding?
Well, we're looking for you today to have your comments on whether they have, this project is consistent. That's one thing. But through the Phase Two, they have essentially done that, yes.
So, but on AUD projects, will we provide comments for providing consensus on findings for historic resources element, you know, compatibility? Sorry to get tangled up there.
Chair, Lieutenant, Commissioner Higgins. So the Planning Commission is providing consensus comments on general plan policies and whether or not you find the project to be consistent with them. So yes, that is your role today. The Historic Landmarks Commission, in their decision, does not specifically make general plan findings, but that's wrapped into their review in terms of whether or not they can grant their project design approval.
And who makes the sequel finding, then? Staff, based on, you know, leaning on our and HLC's consensus?
Chair, Lieutenant, Commissioner Higgins.
Nuance is a good...
Staff makes a recommendation as to what, whether or not we find, we think the project meets an exemption, and then that's included and provided to the Historic Landmarks Commission.
And then based on Tuesday's city council hearing, some of this will change with respect to AUD projects and planning commission review and how we interact with the other bodies or vice versa, the other, you know, advisory boards.
Commissioner Higgins, that is a change that may be coming down the line, but at this point, the HLC makes the finding and there would likely be an environmental finding that would go along with their project design approval.
Okay, so Anthony, while you're here, I guess I'm encouraged to hear that there's been some clarity and scope provided by, you know, city attorney's office or whoever because of the, you know, unwieldy nature of the AUD, you know, process. You know, you guys took the bait on lots of land use, density, traffic, circulation, you know.
What flavor of ice cream you eat there?
Woodsmoke, APCD review, so. But you have heard now that, so we've gone down that path so many times and, you know, I appreciate, you know, that some projects do deserve to be in HLC purgatory because of what they start out like, but a lot of them are, you know, are, you know, depends on who the applicant is and the design team too, and you just need to get to implementing the general plan. So, but now we've sort of hit the pendulum and it's swinging back to the planning commission to move that along, so I'm encouraged by all of that, I guess I'll just say. So I just have one more question for staff and thank you for all your hard work. It's very tedious, I imagine.
Can you hold that question?
For staff?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure.
I just wanted to finish with Commissioner Grumbine, if you don't mind. Okay, Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question relates to what Commissioner Thompson brought up, and it's really directed to you, Commissioner Grumbine. The August 22nd minutes, they provide some elaboration, the decoration of the building, miradores, surrounds and chimneys are suggested. This suggests that, as Commissioner Thompson's suggested comment implied, that the building needs more of a feeling of tying in with the Victorian buildings. Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
Not necessarily. So as part of the historian's report, it was, it is a question of whether they tie in more or less. I mean, in terms of the form, a mirador being more of a Spanish colonial revival element.
I'm surprised to see that.
Yeah, so, and part of it was, I think, that the drawings were, the design was kind of in one, neither here nor there, we weren't quite sure exactly how stylistically or, and it was trying to do a tough job of fitting into a neighborhood that had a number of different styles. So it was, it's still in that process, but we felt that it needed to come onto one way or the other, and how that would play out is, was still on the table. And with the Historic Structures Report, and this is also probably why I made a comment about that, rafter tails, stucco walls and wood railings and a few other things seem to be all found within the neighborhood and part of a traditional language, but not seeing it on one particular building or another altogether. And so wanting to understand really how those, all those pieces were playing together, and I, so I clarified, that was why I clarified with the historians, that what they were saying was they're using elements from the traditional architecture of the neighborhood. It didn't, it just meant that that didn't offend the aught house and the street layout and that, and that we would still be able to review that and kind of work with the architect on that design expression coming down the road. And that wasn't totally locked in as a, we can't, if we accept the report, we can no longer, you know, kind of weigh in on those subjects. So that was where, at least in my understanding, where everything was and what we were approving and how we approved it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. Okay, I think that's all for Commissioner Grumbine. Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate your time and all your hard work on the project and the hard work on HLC.
No problem.
So, thank you. Okay, so we are going to move on to, oh, Commissioner Higgins had a question for staff. Sorry.
Could you put the elevations back up? I think it's the southeast or southwest. It's the De La Guerra side. Other way. Right, go back.
So this is De La Guerra on this side, so this is the rear, it's the aught house.
One more.
So this is, yeah, De La Guerra here to the right, so this is...
Because we have this issue with the pointer not showing up on this TV screen, just try to follow me with your cursor.
Okay.
This is the...
Right there.
We're gonna do, we're doing this pretty well.
I think this is a new, a new video game.
So this is the, this dash line here, bring, you know, meet me here, your cursor. Yeah, okay. So that is the outline of the two-story commercial automotive shop, is that correct? On, that is on De La Guerra?
That's correct.
And so this distance from here to here is, what do you figure, six, eight feet?
Six feet.
Okay, and then so another six feet? And then could I get the reverse of that from the other property owner's perspective?
Let's go this way.
This is the dash line of that same building, the commercial building on the other side, or is this a structure that is on, to the north of the subject project?
So this is the house here, I think it's that...
This is, this is the CMU block wall that is, that you can see in the driveway of the...
I believe that's, that's true.
Mr. Elkhonin's property, is that correct?
Commissioner Higgins, can these questions wait until we have the applicant's presentation and public comment?
You've made me wait. I'm just asking what that dash line is, so they don't have to respond now, but they can, they can find for it.
Okay, let's leave that question out there and then the applicant can respond to what the dash line is and maybe clarify the elevations. Okay, I'd like to move on and let's go to, Mr. Cornell, are you presenting or Ms. Allen? Okay, you're going to start. Okay, just before you start, we're going to have the applicant's presentation and then we're going to go to public comment. We have quite a few speaker slips here, so I thank you for your patience. And after public comment, we're going to come back to the commission for questions and answers to Commissioner Higgins' questions, if they're not done during the presentation, and then deliberations. So let me give you, I can give you 20 minutes and...
Great, thank you.
Once I set this. Okay, welcome, Ms. Allen.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Happy to be here. I just wanted to let you know the, sort of the outline of our presentation, so certainly Brian Cornell will start off and go over the project plans and answer some questions and focus on the unit plans. I'm sorry, first, I'm going to have the applicant, owner, Jeremy Bassan, come up with some introductory comments, then Brian. Our team is here. We do have the project architectural historians, Pam Post and Tim Hazelton of Post-Hazelton Associates in the audience, and the landscape architect, Sam Mafis, here, and of course myself, to answer any questions you may have. Turn it over to Mr. Bassan.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Bassan.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jeremy Bassan. I'm the owner of the property and the project applicant. I'd like to introduce the project to you today and to tell you the story of taking a rundown, underutilized asset and turning it into what our community really needs. I purchased the three properties out of bankruptcy in 2013. They were mostly vacant and neglected when I took over. I quickly fixed them up and got them occupied. I'm an accidental developer. The original plan was to buy and hold, but I eventually realized that the highest and best use of the property was to provide more rental housing for the city. Santa Barbara desperately needs more rentals and this is the perfect location for it. It's close to Ralph's, Paseo Nuevo, State Street, Jobs and the Transit Center. This project will greatly benefit our community by providing housing downtown. I want to encourage our residents to engage with the downtown community by giving them free tokens that they can use at the farmer's market, and we will also encourage residents to participate in First Thursdays and downtown events. These units, the units we're proposing are small, there are no luxury amenities, it's about as lean and simple a project as we could possibly design. It's been a two-year process to get here, including a total redesign and a new architect, but I'm okay with that because the project we have today is an excellent development with lots of community benefits. Through the course of our many HLC meetings, we have had 55 speakers and letters of support. The majority of people see that this is a good idea. I've secured partnerships to mitigate the parking impact of this development. Most notably, Paseo Nuevo has agreed to offer our residents and their guests discounted parking. We'll also provide free zip car memberships and are exploring the option of having an electric ride-share vehicle parked on site. I thank you in advance for your consideration of this project. It's a fine example of a local resident stepping up and doing his best to meet the Santa Barbara's need for more housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll stop the clock and Mr. Cornell, welcome.
I'm ready.
And that means I'm going to start it right back up.
Thank you, Chair Wiskin, members of the commission.
Perhaps if you can weave into your...
The answers to the questions.
The answers to Commissioner Higgins' question.
Absolutely.
Yep, thank you.
So this will actually be helpful, well, no, I take it back because it's not on the screen. If you, basically, there are, there are smaller buildings on, that are just outside of this screen right here, that are those outlines that you saw on that north, northwest elevation. So this is the existing site with the adjoining properties. We, of course, are this L-shaped piece. I wanted to clarify one thing, the tree locations, the street trees is a little bit off. We actually have an additional street tree that's not shown. It's not the actual magnolia street tree there, it's a different, I think it's an alder, and I'll talk about that later. We also have a palm tree up off De La Guerra that is being removed for a driveway. And so then this overlays and shows you the relationship of the footprint of the new project with those buildings that are going to be demolished. The existing Victorian is back 36 feet to its primary face, and as we talked about on the site visit, the new, the relocated Victorian is 21 feet. So there is a, what is that, 15-foot difference between the two in terms of the proposed setback. And as I pointed out again at the site visit, I really think that relationship at the corner, and we talked about this extensively at HLC, is really one of the strongest aspects of locating that building on the corner, the Victorian, the aught house. So it's fairly straightforward as far as the site plan is concerned. All the parking is at grade. We also are accommodating their very spacious spaces. During the course of the HLC review, it was suggested that the drive off of De La Vina be one-way, so you are seeing that in the proposal today. I might add that the landscape plan does not show it, it shows it in the old configuration of two-way. And then we would have entrance and exit off of De La Guerra. So there are 40 spaces, so 38 designated and then two accessible, so we're actually overparked by a couple of spaces. And then the bike parking, of course, is directly off of De La Guerra at the main entrance across from where there would be a lobby, elevator stair up to the units. The unit configuration, as Jeremy mentioned, these are small units. In fact, I'll just take this opportunity to blow up kind of that front corner to give you some idea of what these sizes are. So we have, you know, units, the smaller of the new units are 483 square feet, those are studios. We basically have a range of one bedrooms that are in the five, high 500 to 600 square foot range, and then a few units are a little bit bigger but one bedroom. This is the third floor plan. The third floor is set back considerably from De La Vina. I'll show you a section that indicates that. And then finally, this is the roof plan, which begins to illustrate the breaks in the massing of the roof, and this is the important area here where we broke that massing, as was mentioned by Commissioner Grumbine. This is the landscape plan. You may have questions for Sam later, but I think it's fairly straightforward. This area right here, we intend to be usable open space for the neighbors. There was some discussion at HLC about the removal of the hedge along there. We think the hedge is actually a nice thing to separate the De La Vina traffic from that open space, but we're open to ideas. This also is that alder tree, which Sam has suggested really probably would be best to remove. Even though it's possible with the one-way drive, we could keep it, it probably is better to remove and replace with the designated magnolia street tree. So these are the views. The first view is at the corner of De La Guerra and De La Vina and the relocated aught house. Second view is from De La Guerra, looking at that older mixed-use project. So you can see, I think, in perspective, a much better sense of how that building blocks the majority of our project. You see the entrance there from De La Guerra into the parking area. And then you just see the corner of the aught house. This is then the additional rendering we did for the Phase Two study and HLC to show how the aught house will appear now with the side frontage along De La Guerra. And a lot of these windows and things, as has been mentioned, get replaced to be more consistent with the Victorian architecture.
That's the improved, that's the improved...
That's the improved, yes.
Yeah, with the renovations done, as you discussed.
So initially, HLC expressed some concern that perhaps this was not an appropriate frontage along De La Guerra, but I think when they saw this view, they saw that it looked, it looked... But I think when they saw this view, they saw that it looked fine. This is looking up de la Vina and what the new project frontage will look like. You can see actually in this view, looking straight across, we do have what I've referred to as a mirador element. That is in the process of being studied. In fact, I think it probably is going to go away by the time we show up at HLC with the project design approval. And let me just speak very briefly. As far as the architecture is concerned, my feeling was that to try to do a very specific style, like say craftsmen next to this Victorian, was just not the right thing to do. Clearly, doing Victorian next to Victorian is not the right thing to do. Spanish did not feel right. What I'm trying to do here is frankly a very background building, something that is very understated. The best analogy I can give you, and we're developing some more images for HLC when we go back to them next year, is really the late '40s, early '50s apartment buildings that you see where they, you know, they have nice eve detailing. They have usually bull-nosed windows or bull-nosed plaster into typically like steel windows. There's just a very beautiful simplicity about them. And that's what we're trying to create here, is just a very simple background apartment building like we see so much really up and down de la Vina, another of our primary streets. So I want this to be quiet. The aught house as it's sited now and then the building as it would be proposed. And there again, this particularly illustrates, I think, that mirador is not the right... Or bay window would be the better word. But I think that is going to be simplified and actually just made into a large north-facing kind of studio window for that particular unit. So these are the elevations with which Kathy has already gone through. 36-foot to the top of the aught house roof. These are the side and rear elevations. So looking at the front of the project in relationship, the front two-story portion is about 26 and 1/2 feet. The rear portion of that separate building is 34 feet. Looking from the north-northwest side, this is where I was pointing out the setback to the third story is 65 feet back from the property line. And then the closest portion of the building is just a little over 20 feet back from the sidewalk. And then this is that rear south elevation. The outline that you see is the two-story apartment or condos that are behind us. And then this is from de la Guerra again, and I kind of pointed out those buildings. So just to go back to this one real quick, again, those little outlines are the buildings. I think they show on your site plan A 0.0. Sorry. So HLC also, early on when we were reviewing this, they did want to look at a kind of a sense of other buildings with similar mass in the neighborhood. So we did this little composite of buildings. I think this was a... I want to say 100-foot radius that we went around with... Maybe it was 300-foot perhaps? But anyway, you can see that there's, for instance, some of the buildings that I'm going to highlight here very briefly is 121 West de la Guerra, which is just a half a block away. The building up de la Vina, the building at the corner of de la Vina and Cannon Perdido, and then the Housing Authority project, El Correo, that we did. So first off, the de la Guerra, the peak of that building is up at about 35 feet. So it's comparable in terms of mass. So that building is very close by. The building up de la Vina is between 30 and 32 feet at its highest point. That building on Cannon Perdido and de la Vina is 43 feet tall. And then the Correo, El Correo, is 32 feet. So that's all within sort of the height ranges that I have shown you. And that was something that was important for HLC relative to the issue of neighborhood compatibility. So that concludes our presentation. I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Allen, did you have anything that you... Okay, so you've got about seven minutes left. And I'm going to open up public comment and then we'll come back for questions. So thank you, Mr. Cornell. I think these people have been very patient, waiting through probably two hearings. So everyone gets two minutes. I'm going to just switch this. So let me just mark down the time left. You might want to come up after public comment since you have seven minutes left. Okay, let me reset the timer. Is there anyone here that's yielding their time to anyone? Okay. No, you yielded or don't yield it. It's only two minutes. So... Okay, so you all have two minutes. Let me just preset this. Come up to the mic. Please put the mic up so you speak clearly into it. And you'll see a little timer up there so you know when you're getting close. And I'll let you know when you're getting close. So our first speaker is Gary McDermott, who will be followed by Matt Williams. And if the second speaker could just be ready to come on up when the first one is done. So welcome, Mr. McDermott.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I wished I had been a public speaker in school or taken a class or something like that. But standing here today, looking at what's being proposed, I am sick to my stomach. I own the property directly behind this project. It's located 224 West de la Guerra. The height of this building, I don't even think I'm going to see sky once this thing is built, looking out. The way it is set up, the building that I live in or own is facing the mountains. And the mountains are gone, looking at this project. We have no other windows anywhere else in the building. They're all facing the mountain. With this project, I'm not even going to see sky. So I'm glad to be here. I'm glad I have a chance to voice what this project is going to do to my views. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDermott.
Chair, could I ask the speaker to point out exactly which property is his?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
This one right here. This is where the windows look towards the mountains, right here. I don't know what we're doing with the rest of them. Being in construction, I saw they had the story polls up and I got a couple of pictures here, quick length, but I didn't bring them to put in the file. But I'm sure you guys have story polls of what we're up.
Okay, yes, we do have a record of that, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, Matt Williams will be followed by Don Elkhonin. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. My name is Matt Williams. I was in the neighborhood for over 40 years and doing business in the same location. I'm at 210 West de la Guerra. I have concerns that will impact me, such as the height, that will disrupt the natural airflow that we presently have in the proposed building. Flanks one entire side of me and the entire backside of me, plus an additional 75 feet, which is definitely going to affect the airflow that I have presently. Also possible noise complaints stemming from my commercial business, which we don't make much noise, but being next to a high-density project. To my dismay, over half of the story polls were never put up. Even though the aught house is existing, it is being moved a substantial amount. And where it's being relocated, it is much more visible from both de la Vina and de la Guerra Street. And the other building that would be on the right-hand side of me, that was not story polled either. And that goes all the way to the corner, the back corner of my building. So with that being said, shame on the developer and the city for allowing this to happen and deceiving the public. I was assured by the HLC that the story polls would be up for one week. They were not. Building height also needs to be reduced to two stories. This is predominantly a one- and two-story neighborhood, as which was put out. In that one block, yes, there was one building that is over two stories. But that is one building out of the entire block. Just because it's a half a block away on something else, eventually you allow this to happen. You're going to have three- and four-story buildings from the mountains all the way to the ocean. This is not affordable housing at $2,500 a month, which is proposed for a one-bedroom, for workforce housing. As far as walking to work to the paseo, there's nobody at the paseo that makes that kind of money that can afford it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Don Elkhonin will be followed by Samuel Gould. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. My name is Don Elkhonin. I own 817 de la Vina directly to the north of this project. My letter to Planning Commission dated December 2nd spoke to the issues of the impact that the proposed project will have to the de la Vina corridor, the negative impacts of moving historical aught building and the timing and placement of story polls. I'd like to add the following. Based on discussions with legal counsel and my own understanding, the project before you is not consistent with existing zoning, nor the general plan, nor the broad priorities of the city to protect the character and aesthetic elements of this area. Nor does this project, as currently conceived, in any way attempt to blend in with the current historical elements in place, nor with the general build-out as currently found. This is an immensely out-of-place precedent that simply does not fit. City planning also needs to consider the increased traffic, increased vehicle miles traveled and local level of service congestion issues that this project, as proposed, will cause. Then consider the project at 821 de la Vina. And what after that? Clearly, traffic congestion and a severe lack of street parking, which is already impacted, will become untenable, something no one wishes. Finally, the negative impact to my specific property cannot be overstated. The proposed building on the street directly south of my Victorian does not fit, negatively impacts what we now have. The massive unbroken two- and three-story single building, running the whole depth of the property directly to the south of my building, creates an imposing unbroken wall 36 feet or taller from front to rear of the property. They say they have breaks that's just in the roof line. The need to... It needs to be reduced and broken up. Finally, the story polls. HLC decisions regarding size, bulk and scale were made before the story polls were even put in place for the Planning Commission, HLC, or the public viewing and comment. Not only were the story polls... I'm done. Not only were the story polls placed after the fact, they're only up for two days. How does this fit the reason for story polls in the first place? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, Samuel Gould will be followed by Elliot McDougal. Sam Gould is not here. Okay. Is Elliot McDougal here? Okay. So you are going to be followed by Jesse Gaddy?
Right. Again, my name is Elliot McDougal. Thank you for hearing me. I am a developer of renewable energy as well as a council... Sitting on the partnership council for the Santa Barbara Community Environmental Council. So as somebody who's dedicated their career to environmental issues, I've reviewed this project and I have to say that I think this is exactly what Santa Barbara needs in order to accommodate more housing that is responsible, decreases traffic and provides access to the downtown corridor. Looking at these smaller units, and I speak again as a young professional, as well as somebody who's born and raised in Santa Barbara, smaller units like this are exactly what we need in order to find the workforce and the energy and the revitalization that the downtown corridor needs. We have to have units like this. The way the developer has proposed this, including both ride-sharing services and shared vehicles and the fact that it is within walking distance to all of the both social and work zones of downtown Santa Barbara, means that it's going to decrease the environmental impact of living in the area. And frankly, you know, as somebody who would look at living in a place like this, wouldn't be interested in having a car because my work zone and my living space and my social area are all going to be right next to each other. So I'll close by just saying, as both a resident of Santa Barbara and as a developer of renewable energy, very much in favor of this project and others like it that are responsible on providing great works... Living space, close to good workspaces, and that are taking into account our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Jesse Gaddy will be followed by Jesse Eisenstadt? Is Jesse Eisenstadt? Okay, great. Two Jesses in a row. Go figure. Okay. Welcome.
Hello, good afternoon. So my name's Jesse Gaddy. I actually was a resident at a house called the de la de la House across the street from this for about two years. Don't live there anymore. And I also... So I'm familiar with the neighborhood. I also own a restaurant called Barberino that's on the same block, just up on the corner there. And both from having lived in the neighborhood and also spending the majority of my time at Barberino, walking around that neighborhood, I definitely love the idea of this project and the concept of this project. I think both as a young person who's been looking for housing and a young professional looking for housing, I think this meets a lot of the criteria I would have had if I was looking for housing. And also as a business owner and being really familiar with that neighborhood, I think any progress in that neighborhood and kind of giving part of the neighborhood a facelift would be really beneficial to the whole community. I've walked down de la Vina many times at 12:00 AM, 1:00 AM, walking back from work when I lived at the other house on de la Vina. And I can say it's currently, and especially back then, wasn't necessarily like the most safe-feeling neighborhood. So I think a project like this would definitely add to the safety factor of the neighborhood. I like the aesthetic of the project. Like I said, I like the idea of having more workforce housing in the downtown area. Personally, I'm a big believer in technology and progress. And I think that a lot of the issues we're seeing with parking are probably, you know, by the time this is constructed and finished, probably not going to be that big of issues. You know, young people like me are moving more and more to not having cars or using scooters or whatever else. And let's see, what else do I have here? Yeah, and then having kind of seen this project from when it first started and also having been through two commercial build-outs through Santa Barbara, I'm really impressed by their ability to keep changing their plans and putting in the money to do those, hiring a new architect. I've been through the same thing and it can, you know, completely shut down your project. And it seems like they've really gone the extra mile to jump through all the hoops and think of how they can best impact the neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, Jesse Eisenstadt? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Jesse Eisenstadt. Should I go?
Go for it.
Well, as we know, everything in Santa Barbara is old and expensive. What I like about this project is that it is not old. I also want to speak about the developer, Jeremy Bassan. He's got an incredible vision and taste. And he's of the younger generation of Santa Barbara that I think is going to really work to improve the town. And I just can't express the level of frustration with the renters of Santa Barbara due to the age of inventory. I think that broken pipes and the endless lists of problems that happened with old, expensive properties is something that doesn't really get talked about a lot. And I see this as being the next, you know, new thing that people are going to want to live in. And I support the project for that reason. I think it fits into the neighborhood. I love what they did with the Victorian and how Brian Cornell discussed how the building will fit in with that and not try and overshadow it, but actually take it second place. So I like that and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Carrie Ferrarsi?
Ferrari.
Ferrari. Okay, sorry. Welcome and followed by Noah Denzel. Is Noah Denzel here?
President.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Carrie Ferrari and I am here to speak in support of the proposed development project at 815 de la Vina Street. I've been to the site and it's a... I've been to the site and it's a great location for an apartment building. The size, bulk, and scale are compatible with the neighborhood. Future residents living there will benefit from the proximity to the grocery store, public transit, and State Street. And we know more housing is key to the revitalization of State Street. Downtown businesses will also benefit from having future residents nearby to frequent their businesses. And it's also nice to see that it's a simple, no frills development. There's no fancy amenities. And the development project truly embodies the spirit of what the AUD program stands for. So I hope you all will send positive comments back to the HLC. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Noah Denzel, followed by Thuhiri Lewin? Is that, okay, did I, okay, we'll deal with, welcome.
Hi. My name is Noah Denzel. I run a small, growing business in town. We're a team of probably 15 people. We make smartphone and smartwatch accessories, like for your Apple Watch. And we, we're a team largely UCSB, most of the people in their 20s, early 30s, part of this sort of younger demographic that's been sort of fighting the housing shortage. I myself have experienced that and I witness it often on a regular basis. To, to reference something that was said earlier about cars, you know, I actually, I have access to a car. I don't own one personally. I doesn't, you know, the car ownership is dropping a lot, even license, people getting licenses at a much lower rate than they used to back in the day, you know, sharing economy, all the different options. At our company, we actually have a program where if you don't drive your car to work, you get a, get a $2 bill. So that's kind of a funny thing. Believe it or not, you can walk into the bank and they'll give you 500 twos. So I think that's reflective of, there's a lot of good business stuff going on in town. There's a good up and coming younger generation that's vibrantly involved, and having, you know, good workforce housing options is critical for that. I myself am kind of a product of sort of, you know, difficult to find the right housing solution in Santa Barbara. My parents met here in the harbor in the, in the 80s, and they moved up to the Washington State to a small Victorian seaport. So very familiar with Victorian houses, and I've seen, I've seen a lot of them. So I, I would, I would happily live in a location like this. I would, I would love to see more, I'd love to see more stuff like this. A few weeks ago, I was getting coffee and I saw someone wearing a Planning Commission shirt jacket, and I shared some comments. She said, "You should go speak at some point." So when I, Jeremy told me about this, this committee meeting, I figured now's my chance. So maybe I'll come back and share some more thoughts another day. But I think stuff like this is great for, opportunity for housing for people, being part of our economy and, you know, working at cool companies.
Thank you. And thank you for coming to your first Planning Commission meeting.
Yeah. Thank you.
Madam Chair, are you holding out on the Planning Commission jackets?
I don't. It must be, or I'm going to take the blame for it. So you better tell me it came from somewhere else. Okay. Your name is Thuhiri?
Thuhiri. Thuhiri Lewin. Yeah. Lewin.
Lewin. Okay. Welcome. Thank you.
So I'm a resident physician at Cottage Hospital, and I live in that corner cottage right there. And what, my biggest concern is-
Put the mic down to your-
Oh, sorry.
You can bend it. Yeah. Good.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Thank you.
So I live in that corner cottage right there where the three story building would be like maybe a foot, two feet away from where I'm staying. And that concerns me with like dust pollution, demolition work, and noise, especially because I work nights sometimes as a doctor. I have to sleep during the day to take care of my patients at night. So this is all kind of really concerning. And I don't know about, I mean, yes, we do need housing in Santa Barbara, but how affordable is this? I mean, not everyone can afford $2,500 a month of rent. So I'm not sure just how many people, and then the thing with parking, we get one unit of parking space here, but I mean, I have my boyfriend and me living in, and we both have two cars. So like having just 40 spaces for that whole apartment complex, you can't guarantee that there won't be multiple units that like have multiple people with multiple vehicles. That's just kind of disillusional. So yes, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And our final speaker is Shannon Batcher? Shannon Batcher? Okay. Great. Thank you. Bat-
Bachev.
Bachev.
Yes. So good, no problem. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Shannon Bachev, and I'm the executive administrator for the Coastal Housing Coalition. CHC advocates for workforce housing, which we define as households earning 120% to 200% AMI. We submitted a letter of support for this project, so I'm not going to repeat what was written there, but I did want to reaffirm a couple aspects. We've met with Mr. Basson on multiple occasions. So we met with him in the early stages of his planning and then again after Cornell Collective redesigned the project. And we are just really pleased with how the project has progressed. We don't see a lot of developers take this level of detail in terms of taking the comments from HLC and really making significant changes. I'd also like to reaffirm how appropriate this project is for workforce housing. These are very small units that are affordable by design. The location is perfect for downtown workers who want to live near where they work. And on the rent issue, we have a lot of projects that come to us and we give them clear boundaries in terms of acceptable rents, and that's using the AMI from 120 to 200%. A lot of the AUD projects we've seen have been at the higher end of the scale. Mr. Basson's project, the ranges are at the lower end of the scale, some in the middle, which we find very appropriate. I'd like to take my last 30 seconds to just say that I've been a renter in Santa Barbara for 15 years. I live with my husband in a small one bedroom on Emerson Street, which is in a historic neighborhood. My husband's been a renter for 26 years in Santa Barbara. We love our small place. We walk to the Rose Garden when we need more space. We walk to our local watering hole, which we refer to as our living room. And this is what's needed in downtown. We need locals living, working, and using downtown as their living room. So we really think that you should support this project.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay. And just to read into the record, we have written correspondence from Pauline Kahn, Don Elconan submitted two correspondences, and Craig Minnis from the Coastal Housing Coalition also submitted a letter. So let the record reflect those, and public comment is closed. And it's back to the Commission. Before we get going, I'd like to start with Commissioner Higgins' question. Did you get that answered? Because-
Yeah, not really. So, but-
Why don't we go back to that since I was the one that cut that off?
If you could go to A... I think just A1 dot 00, if you have that sheet? Or that one is fine there if you, I think the elevation I'm, my question is related to is from-
I don't think it's, I think it's going to be too big. Are you looking again for those questions?
I'm looking, well, I have two questions now.
You might look at the elevations because you, you were citing the dashed lines that you and Ms. Kennedy-
I'm trying to tie something on the elevation to the site plan. And I think what I'm asking is from the elevation from Mr. Elconan's property to the north.
Just going to see, you know, I can't, I don't have it on this, this shot, unfortunately.
I'm, my question is, where is this roof line on your elevation?
So this elevation?
No, no, the, that one, I think. Yes, this here on the left, if you're following me with your cursor, is De La Vina Street, correct? This is De La Vina?
Yeah, I don't have a cursor.
I'm looking south?
Yes.
Staff will catch up with me. And so this here is Mr. Williams' roof line? No.
No.
Where's the Melikiori?
This, this is the property to the north. So this is Don Elconan's property. So he's got the larger house in front, and then he has small cottages behind that are just outlined here.
Okay. So we're not seeing what his, what will be seen from his driveway?
Well, yes. This is the elevation seen from, this is the elevation along his driveway. And there's a, there's a continuous, what we don't show here, there's a continuous hedgerow all along the base of this building.
And what is that dashed line right there?
That is, that is the cottage on the north side of his property.
I see.
And I believe that shows on your A, on your sheet A 0.00.
Okay. So my question is, where's the mixed use building that is on?
So let me go back. So this is the back. So one of the speakers, the first speaker, I believe, lives in the building that's right here, behind this. This is the south elevation. Okay?
Is this McDermott's view?
Yes.
Could you put that back? So we don't see his eve line on this.
It's, it's, that's, that's it right there.
Right here is the roof line of his structure?
That's the roof peak. The eve is down right about here.
As a one story, that-
It's a two story.
His building is two story?
Yes.
So he's, his concern is that he's going to be, the windows on his first floor are going to be-
Well, no, the second floor. The windows on the first floor are already blocked by a building that is on our property right at the property line.
Okay.
Okay? And then the mixed use, just to, just to continue, the mixed use building along De La Guerra is that outline right there.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. I don't know whose light went on first. I'm going, let me just start with Commissioner Thompson. Go ahead.
I'd like to follow on with Commissioner Higgins' questions there. Mr. Cornell, seems like most of the speakers that were not living contiguous to the project were definitely in favor of it, but you had a lot of feedback from the neighbors that didn't like it. So are you guys out there working with the neighbors to try to ameliorate some of their concerns and deal with whatever their issues are to the best of your ability?
Yeah. Sure. Yeah. I'd love to answer that because I've really taken the lead on it, if it's okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Come on up, Mr. Basson.
Thank you. The gentleman in the back, I have not had a chance to talk to him. He came to the last HLC meeting for the first time. So this, his concerns are relatively new, and we haven't changed the project since we've gotten his feedback. And I have worked extensively with, with Matt, who owns the two story commercial building. He was also concerned about solar visibility, and we actually did a solar analysis of solar panels on his rooftop and had some of the bamboo trimmed. And he mentioned that at some HLC meetings. It's in the notes. So I've done everything I could to reach out to the neighbors, to talk to them, to engage them. I also, Mr. Elconan was proposing a four story AUD project on his property. And when he was doing that, he met with my architects at the time, Design Arc, to see if there were things we could do to work together. So in the past, when he was trying to do a development, we were working together. He has decided not to pursue development. He then tried to sell the parcel as a potential AUD project. That didn't happen. He still owns it. And if I could do anything to satisfy him or to appease him, I absolutely would, but I don't think, so yeah. If there's anything I can do to help work with the neighbors, I'm here and I'm happy to do it.
Okay. My main concern was that we sometimes see projects come in here and the neighbors find out about it at the last minute, and the property owner hasn't even made any attempt to talk to them. So we want to make sure that you're out there beating the bushes with your neighbors, trying to find out what their concerns are and see what you can do in the design of the project to smooth things over to the best of your ability. Obviously, for some people, anything's going to be wrong. But, but if you can do things to make small changes that appeases some of the concerns they have, that's all to everyone's, everyone's benefit.
I agree. And just to add to that, the people who own the building and work in, across the street, there's a home furnace repair shop, favoring letters of support. There's a lot of people that are just intimidated or too busy to come to meetings, but favoring letters of support. I've talked to the hairdresser Manny who has the building across the street. He generally supports it. Mission Security is on that block. They wrote a letter of support. It's mostly businesses. The only residential really is Mr. Elconan's building, as far as I can remember. So I've talked to a lot of the businesses, a lot of the neighbors, and you can also read all the letters of support, about 55 letters and speakers.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions for staff and then one for Mr. Cornell. But this is going to be dumb coming after our lunch meeting today on, on that subject. But so the Otte House has what designation of structural something?
Commissioner Jordan, it has received a structural merit designation.
And is, and as you look at the property, is this now the, the house that's to the right immediately of that? Does that have the same designation?
So that would be the 817?
Or 809 or what?
Don Elconan's property.
Don's house. Not like I know Don, but that's the name I can remember, okay?
I don't believe that it has, is on the historic list or been designated.
It is not. And is it because it has escaped or is it equivalent when you look at it now or?
I would defer to Nicole Hernandez on that if she arrives, but also, or, but it has not been designated.
If I may, I'm Tim Hazeltime with Post Hazeltime, and we prepared the report, so I can hopefully answer that question since Nicole hasn't been able, hasn't here yet. 817 is not a designated historic resource. It has not been identified by the city as a potential historic resource. So at this point in time, it does not have a designation.
So from what I understand-
Or a potential designation.
From what I understand, part of that process is either you initiate that review with a building permit or the city does a survey and catches it.
It has been surveyed.
Okay. Oh, it has?
Yes.
So it has been looked at?
It was surveyed in the late 1970s.
Okay.
There was a nearby survey for the lower De La Vina corridor and a potential historic just as identified as you may know.
So be kind with me. This is not my subject matter expert, okay? Because I'm going to start asking my dumb questions now. So when you look at those in their frame, they're, they would be, they would frame the new development, then you went through a series of phase reports where one of the, like the phase two or the second phase or something, looks at the consequences of moving the Otte House down to the corner and does then, the way I read that, does the project have a negative effect on the significance of the Otte House? Is that correct?
Correct. And so, yes.
And you don't, and so what you're telling me is because of a lack of designation on 817? 809?
817.
817. Because of a lack of designation there, the process you go through does not look at a consequence, a negative consequence or a positive consequence of the project on the separation of those two houses away from each other?
No, actually, our report did evaluate that.
Okay. And what's, what's-
And the, well, when you look at a streetscape like the 800 block of De La Vina Street, the first thing you do is assess, well, once you've done history, to understand the history of development and the buildings that are there, you look at what we call integrity. And so can that streetscape on the 800 block convey the way it looked during the late 19th and early 20th century when it was first developed? And that's generally the period that's considered a historical period for that neighborhood. So between, let's say circa 1880 to 1925. And because of an extensive series of demolitions and building removals, which actually began in 1931, when a house at the corner of West De La Guerra and the 800 block of De La Vina Street, where the Otte House is proposed for relocation, originally there was a substantial two story Victorian there that was demolished in the 1930s. And then subsequent to that, mostly in the post-World War II period, about seven Victorian era buildings and houses on the 800 block were demolished or moved. In fact, one of the buildings on the other side of the block, on the 800 block, was moved down to the bird refuge, leaving just a small truncated wing of that structure in place. And so in evaluating what impact the relocation of the Otte House would have- And so in evaluating what impact the relocation of the aught house would have on both 809 and 817 De La Vina Street, we assessed whether there was a significant historic streetscape. We determined there was not. That was outlined in the Phase One Historic Resources Report, which was accepted by the Historic Landmarks Commission. The Phase Two Report evaluated the impact of the relocation of the house on the historic resources on the block.
So I just want to go back to what you just said on the—
But we did—we did—I'm sorry, pardon?
So I just want to go back to what you just—you're taking me down a rabbit hole that I'm not equipped to go down.
Okay.
So what you just talked about, the process on the Phase One, is not just a process that involves you coming up with an opinion and putting it down on a piece of paper, that was also presented to the Historic Landmarks Commission, and they agreed with your determination that there was—the streetscape was really only the one house of merit, and it wasn't really a streetscape that—in—as I heard you say it, that really involved that look over that whole block?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not just a paid persons report, it was also presented to HLC. HLC also agreed with that?
Yes, and those find—our analysis and findings are based on an application of the Historic Resources Guidelines set forth in the city MEA.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll let you go. And then, Mr. Cornell, I just have a question for you, that kind of just goes back, then, to the same subject, but it's more—you know, this isn't my strength, my strength is walk along the street as a common guy and just take a look, okay? So right now, you have a set of buildings on the street, in that center spot, that tend to kind of look like each other. They're yellow, they have wood siding on them, and you're going to separate one of them and take it down to the corner, and then put in between them, what I'm presuming, based on these pictures, are plaster covered buildings, right?
Yes.
Is there—is there no reasoning or hope there to front those buildings with something that continues the existing type of look from what's going to be on the right to where you relocate—the aught house? So some type of wood siding, some type of semi-matching type of design, rather than just that gap in a look? Not talking about type of style or architecture, because you know you'll lose me, but just from a guy standing across the street and looking at it, is there—is there no reason at all to try and match that look for that half of the block? Or why wouldn't you?
Well, I may lose you, because to me, it is kind of an authenticity question. You know, yes, I could side—I could—I could do horizontal siding on this-on this new building, and that is—that is a possible solution, that I'm not sure I think is the right one. Again, the sort of image I have of what is the most compatible is something that is very, very simple. And that plaster tends to do that work. It also, frankly, creates a durable building, you know, that is going to stand the test of time. So, you know, it ultimately—that is HLC. HLC is purview, there's no question about it. We've not talked about doing siding before, because, again, the kind of background building that I'm describing to you—so, no, I don't think that it—that matching the materials is critical, and I feel very strongly—and I think Pam and Tim would agree with me—that the last thing we'd want to do is to try to emulate the style of the aught house, or for that matter, the Queen Anne that is the non-designated structure, you know, of De La Vina.
Fair enough. I mean, and it never—it obviously—I'm not—they're subject matter experts, you've been through multiple, multiple meetings, and nobody brought that up, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Okay, we're on to Commissioner Schwartz, please. You've switched places, and I'm thinking, he's not here, why is his light on?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'll start with staff. Could you talk to me a little bit more about why there's a term that's used throughout the staff report that's potentially consistent? This has come up before, but if you would please expound on this, because it really jumps out at me when we—when I—I look at, especially the general plan consistency findings in the various elements and our considerations today. And if you like, I can point to—in the specific paragraphs where this is used, but I'm sure, since you drafted it, you know—you know where this term occurs.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz. So staff has done an evaluation of the general plan policies and goals, and we've looked at it and determined that—in our viewpoint—that it is consistent with those policies, but we are looking to you to get comments on that. So we're stating they're potentially consistent, but we use that term on other projects that you actually make decisions about, and—
Right.
Mostly because you are the ones making the determination. We say it's potentially consistent, you are the ones in your findings that state that it is or is not. So in this case, even though you're not making the determination or taking action, it's a similar situation, that we've done the analysis, we're providing you with the information, but we're looking to you to actually confirm that.
So I'm going to press you a little bit further on this, because in some cases, on some projects, staff takes a firmer position and actually makes definitive or affirmative statements. We've—we've had this, both projects and policy. So I—I'm really trying to understand—it feels like staff is holding back, and I don't know if you're holding back—if—if my characterization is correct, are you holding back only because—I don't know, you're not—you're trying to not prejudice or influence our findings of of a consistency, or is there some other reason? And then I'll move on to another question I have.
We would—if we felt like it was potentially—if it was inconsistent, we would write that. We would say it's potentially inconsistent for these reasons, but if you look prior to what—the conclusion sentence is, that we've given the reasons why we think it is consistent, and then we say therefore it's potentially consistent, based on those those items above it. So I think we are leaning towards doing it this way. We may have had—
You're leaning consistency. You're leaning—
I think towards potential consistency in our reports, at least the ones I've been working on that typically do that. There may be a few that are written differently.
Okay. Okay. I have one question for the Post Hazeltime team, if one of you could come to the podium, please. And this is a follow-on to Commissioner Jordan's question, and I'm going back into my memory on the Secretary of Interior Standards. I—I served on the county's Historic Landmarks Advisory Commission before I was appointed to this commission, and, of course, we reviewed many historic resources. So I wanted to ask you, in terms of moving the aught house and any new development adjacent to it, am I correct in my understanding that actually, on a federal standards level, there's guidance in ensuring that any adjacent development, new or redeveloped, specifically should not try to emulate this historic architectural design, because it ends up, you know, degrading or looking like Disneyland or what have you, you know, shorthand for—
Yes, and answer—
More eloquent language that's in the Secretary—
In answer to your question, Commissioner Schwartz, Madam Chair and Commission members, I'm Pamela Post of Post Hazeltime Associates, and you are correct. We don't want to create a false sense of history, and that's exactly why Secretary of Interior Standards call for a differentiation—I mean compatibility, but a differentiation, so you can know the old from the new. So it's—if you were to, say, follow the suggestion of Commissioner Higgins, you know, as far as the horizontal siding or something, it may be someone could read that as, oh, you know, this has been your—particularly people who are not familiar with architectural styles, that somehow this existed, and it's—it's a creates what we call a false sense of history. So in that way, we find that this is very suitable, what has been proposed.
So—and then just one follow-on question for you, thank you. As Mr. Cornell described very generically, kind of looking to utilize a style that sort of is-recedes or pushes into the background of the newer buildings with simplicity, maybe a 1940s-era reference, is that—do you think that will satisfy the standards we're talking about?
That certainly would, yeah. I mean—
So that's what you're planning to go forward with when you return?
I mean, that's—that's certainly a suggestion that we find, again, we would agree with, and if there's—you know, there could be other styles as well, but that's one in which is proposal to recede this into the background, so that it's not trying to emulate or copy something that is historically existed at the—in relation to, say, the aught house, for example.
Has—has your firm, or to your knowledge, do we have an inventory in the city of other historic Victorians on on street corners? Because I'm—you know, a number of them come to mind for me, but I'm not familiar if we actually have an inventory. We certainly exist in our city.
Yes, yeah. I don't know—I don't know of them specifically, but as—as my partner said at one time, as late as the 1930s, there was a Victorian-era house exactly where the aught house is proposed, and that's why, again, we thought, you know, this could be appropriate, one existed there, so—
That looming one on Mitchell Torreina and De La Vina comes to mind. You know, it's—it's quite eye-catching, and it's been there for—it looks like maybe the same vintage. Okay, thank you, that's—
You're welcome.
That's my my questions for you. And then, Mr. Cornell, if I could ask you just a few questions, and— As I'm looking at the journey that this project has taken through HLC, I wanted to ask you for your thoughts about why there's been a reduction in dwelling units per acre from what the zoning allows for under AUD, which is 63 to 57 dwelling units per acre? Could you comment a little bit more on that?
Well, I'll be very—yeah, I'll be very frank, it's really what fits. I mean, it—you know, I often joke, form follows parking, and, you know, the first—the first iteration was using lifts to get to the 42 units, which I think was the allowable maximum. And when we opted—I mean, part of this exercise, quite frankly, is—and you've been hearing this this sort of discussion, the cost of these projects is very high. Construction costs today are very, very high. So our approach not only was to try to eliminate high construction elements like lifts and just simplify the the parking arrangement, to simplify the buildings, to make the units as small as possible, and this is what frankly fit. And you know, I—
You mean the 57 fit?
Well, the—yeah, the 57 per acre.
Fifty-seven per dwelling units per acre.
Or 36 units, yeah, which, of course, again, 38 units, six of which are in the—in the aught house currently.
Right, they're they're existing.
So there's 32 that are new.
Okay. Did you—did I hear you comment that you think the proposed project is overparked? Did you—did you say that today?
Well, it is—it is—it's a little bit of a technicality. We technically can count one of those—one of those accessible spaces is for the electric vehicle charging, one is for the normal required accessible space. Technically, we can—we could count one of those, but we have elected not to, to leave those free, so that everyone has a space and those will remain available. So所以我们 do have that excess parking.
Okay, and in reducing the height from the allowed 45 feet, the building height from 45 feet to approximately 36, was that to remain at the height of the maximum height of the aught house, or for other reasons that may have escaped?
Well, look, I mean, that—that gets down to that—this compatibility question, and I think that, you know, what is maybe the gorilla in the room here is the challenge that you have, this priority housing overlay zone that is along this De La Vina corridor, and it's a mixed bag, and there are—there are still a lot of one-story buildings, and how do we get more housing in our community and deal with this compatibility issue? And, you know, I—I feel for anyone who, you know, is currently looking at a vacant lot or at an open space, and you're going to put up a three-story building. I understand that completely. It's the unfortunate evolution of a community that happens. And so our job is to make sure that three stories is—as on the one hand, livable as possible for the new residents, but on the other hand, will ultimately fit in. And you know, at HLC, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, how is that north side of this building, or that northwest side, going to be—how is it going to work if somebody builds something just like you in the future? And you know what, it's likely that somewhere along the line, those lots that are north of us, because there's—there is the 817 property, and then just above that, it's a vacant parking lot, as you all know, next to the building that Don Sharp owns, like high likelihood that that will be redeveloped over some time, and at that point, these buildings are going to have to—the new buildings will all have to work together, obviously. So it's—you know, ultimately, it's the setbacks between them that are going to matter.
Yeah, and in fact, you mentioned that open parking lot. Commissioners Lodge, Jordan, and I, serving on this commission, when the prior project proposal came to us. So when we approve something that has not been built and stalled out, what have you. So, yes, we're familiar with with that corridor.
So, yeah, we tried to keep the—you know, it's been a very delicate balance between the necessary height we need for the parking and for livable units, and I—I believe very strongly that, you know, these units should not have eight-foot ceilings, they should have at least nine-and-a-half-foot ceilings, which is what we're striving for, because when they are small, our experience, it's so important to have that extra ceiling height to make them feel good.
Has HLC supported that at this point?
HLC, in their last comments, I think if you review them, there was some discussion about, you know, striving to maybe reduce, you know, the building heights to the extent feasible, so that—that typically is—is the balance, and we are looking at that in preparation of going back to them for project design approval.
Thank you. Well, since Commissioner Higgins jumped in, let me just say, as a follow-on to that, for any decision-maker in the city who has not actually done site visits inside any of the new AUD units, which I have, I would strongly encourage you to do that, because the smaller units that do have larger plate heights or ceiling heights do give a feeling, a much greater feeling of livability than low ceiling or plate height. So this is not theoretical. We really want people to get out and actually have the—to ground truth—I love that new term, I'm hearing it on the news a lot—to ground truth, policy versus, you know, speculation. Okay, thank you, Mr. Cornell. I think I have one question for Ms. Osteringer, if I could. In—in reducing or asking the applicant or the applicant offering to reduce the residential units from 42 to 38, and reducing the number of floors—where am I in my documentation here? Is it from three to four? The fourth floor was taken off or requested to be—so are we bumping up against the Housing Accountability Act, Ms. Osteringer here, in terms of city compliance with the state law?
Well, it appears that the applicant is willing to do this, but yes, under the Housing Accountability Act, the—the projects, when they're reviewed, if they comply with the objective design standards and the zoning standards, the—we can't ask the applicant —and the general plan, of course, we can't reduce the the density, reduce the units, or tend to reduce it through the—through the story heights. But in this case, it sounds like the developer's a good neighbor and wants to design a project that the neighbors like, so I—we're fine, is—because he seems to be willing to do that, but—
Okay, I hope there's more discussion, as you can imagine, Ms. Osteringer, what my thoughts are about this. I hope there's continued discussion, both internal to the city attorney's office, and then with the various decision-making bodies in the city, as to where that balance is between an applicant forfeiting—I'll use that term—conceding, forfeiting their rights by zoning development standards policies in order to try to get a project approved that isn't required under state law. I'm—I am concerned about that, I'm just going to be very blunt today, for the record. So, you know, there's—the hard law, and then there's grayer area and so forth, and, of course, as projects languish in our city process—processes, that adds to cost, and then the cost has to get passed on at some point, and this is—we're talking about rental units. So I think those are my questions for now, Madam Chair. I'll see if any of my colleagues have questions that might trigger others for me, but I think that's it for Owen. And here we have Ms. Hernandez here now. So I might have a historic question, but for now, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Higgins, you were next.
Yeah, I guess I'll just ask a couple of quick ones, and then I guess procedurally, Madam Chair, are we going to—are we doing comments, and then the consensus on the questions?
We'll do—let's get—let's get through all the questions, and then we'll ask Ms. Kennedy when that's all done, to put the slide back up on the—
Kennedy when that's all done, to put the slide back up on the screen on what, on our recommendations by majority vote, and any other comments we make, so-
Okay, I just really have some, one question, then some comments.
Okay, so let's just continue on with questions, and then we'll get there.
So the, the units, the units that are out on the street on De La Vina have the bedrooms on the northernmost or closest to the street. I just noticed that in your floor plan on the second level. Yeah. And is the, is the layout of that intentional, to put the bedrooms out there closest to the street where there's the most amount of noise? Or is there any thought behind maybe, you know, redoing those floor plans? Is that possible?
Well, for, for three of those plans, going from the top down, this plan, this plan, and this plan, I've, I've got bedroom and living space both facing onto the street, because that's the way those units orient. So the one unit I have with the bedroom in front is, is this one. And, you know, that, that theoretically could revise. The pinch point is right here where the entry to the unit has to be. So I could try to get the bedroom in here and then, you know, go down a, a hall of sorts, entry hall to the living space. That would be a possibility.
Okay. And it's just a noise concern, I guess, maybe the, the louder the units are, the cheaper the rent will be. The other question I have is, and this won't happen today, but maybe back, you've brought projects to us in the past that have done a lot of homework with respect of where window openings are in relation to your neighbors. And so that, that would be a helpful exhibit, I think, for us if you ever come back, or maybe for the HLC when you go back there. So that's my question.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Lodge, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cornell, could you indicate on the site plan just where the common open space is?
The common open space is right here, 20 by 20, so it is in that, it's back of the five-foot variable setback required in the AUD ordinance. So it's, it's, it's basically, you know, five feet back from the property line, and then it's a 20 by 20 open area. And, and I should mention, by the way, Kathy, if you could go to the second floor plan again. The current ordinance, the, the new zoning ordinance requires specific open, private open space for every unit. Previously, if we provided, I think, 15% common open area, we didn't have to provide those balconies of six, what end up being six by 12 or six by 14 for a one-bedroom type unit. What we have tried to do here is for, in almost all cases, we have provided the necessary area, like this, for instance, is a larger open space than what is typically required. But some of the units have smaller than the required open space. And this was something that I certainly was very involved in the new, the NZO, in making sure that we had flexibility, because as you can imagine, in, in the, in the historic district, we wouldn't want to have, the building that we're doing at Anacapa and Ortega Street, for instance, having each one of those units have big six by 12 or six by 14 balconies along the street, just would be very challenging architecturally. So staff did write into the new zoning ordinance a provision that if you provided a 20 by 20 area, and you could then request some deviation in that private open space, and that's what we're doing here. So we're trying, trying to provide it for every unit, but it varies to the specifics of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. For staff, I, so I guess, what, what is the zoning here? Is this commercial? It is C2.
CG, Commercial General.
Okay. All right. Because what I was thinking about was residential and where you can't have it in the front setback. So that's what I was, but since it's commercial, okay, can be there. The HLC did comment and ask that plate heights be, be lowered. I know I've heard Mr. Cornell many times make the speech about how they need the higher space, but if anybody's been in Casa de las Fuentes, where the ceiling heights are at most eight feet, maybe eight and a half feet, they are very, very pleasant, very attractive. And, and they're very small. They're smaller than the average unit size, units that are being, that are coming for us. And it's resulted in a, in a building that really fits within the community with the overall, and with the third floor setback. A lot of people don't even know they have, there is a third floor. So I, I would, I would encourage, as much as possible, this is a big building for that neighborhood, and it's going to have a big impact. And unfortunately for some of them, like the doctor who spoke, or some of the other neighbors that are here, this change is going to reduce the livability of, of their places. And I hope that the developer will do whatever he can to ameliorate those impacts. Seemed I read somewhere perhaps in the letter, starting for the application, that parking spaces were narrowed? Is that something, was that from a different project?
No, they were not. No, not on this project.
Okay. All right, sorry. Okay. That, those are my questions. Okay. Thank you. I have a couple of questions here, not very many, though. I think most of mine got answered. Electric vehicle charging stations, is one sufficient? Is that really all you need? I'm, I'm just curious about that.
Well, currently by, by California Building Code, we just need to designate a place for it. We don't have to actually install it. Our intent is to install it. It's challenging, because for the first vehicle charging station, it then has to be accessible. So that will be the one that will be, you know, available, and that can be, even though it's an accessible stall, it can be still used for charging. That's not to say that we, we might not put more charging stations within the project. We really haven't gotten to that level of detail. I know Jeremy has talked about actually having an available electric car on site, so that, you know, it could happen.
Yeah. Well, I was thinking that it might be, it might be, might be better to have more, considering what the game plan is for, for the car on site and, and probably some other people that own electric vehicles. So, okay, thank you. Mr. Cornell, don't go away. The hedge, I want to go back to the hedge. Because I, I'm not, I'm really confused on the hedge.
Do you have the landscape, or I've got the landscape plan, if you don't.
So, on the 22nd of August, HLC talked about they wanted the hedge removed along the front setback. And then I think you talked about keeping the hedge, that you, so where do we stand on the hedge?
Well, I might like Mr. Mafus to answer that question, because he's thought more about it than I have. Sam, if you're willing.
Certainly. Thank you, Brian. Sam Mafus of Earthform Design. So Commissioners and Madam Mayor, in the adaption of the historic aught building, the classic kind of, let's say, turn-of-the-century landscaping has been incorporated to try to complement that corner building as we look at the landscape theme overall. And the hedging, and the kind of the formal aspect of the hedging and the foundation around that building is, is appropriate, and we like the look and feel of that. Also, the open space that we have on De La Vina is close to the traffic, it's close to sidewalk and activity, and there is an open space that we do have that we want to kind of keep private to the, to the, let's say, the new development. So the small hedge on top of a stone curb is a very classic look and a historic look, and we feel that that element ties the whole complex of buildings that we're putting in together.
So you're, you're proposing that not only for the athouse, but also all the way down the project site?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And what's the hedge material? What do you envision?
It would be a boxwood. So it's a lower boxwood. We do have a larger hedge on the north boundary, that's Eugenia, that we're going to retain, that's for privacy.
Right.
And where we need privacy of a higher size, we will use a larger plant material like Eugenia or Lagustrum texanum, but this will be a low boxwood. It can't exceed for the driveway, 42 inches in height for sightline and traffic and good, good safety clearances, so it'll be a low hedge. You'll see over it, you'll see into the, the residential nature as you walk by, as you drive by. So it's not intended to be a tall barrier, it's a very green, nice, low organizing element in the landscape foreground.
Okay. So it won't detract from the building, then, at all?
No, correct.
Okay. And then it looks to me like, I think one of HLC's comments, which I thought was great, since I'm a retired landscape architect, I really look at this, this closely, but I think one of their comments was that the landscape at the ahouse should be different from the landscape of the building. And it looks like you've achieved that here.
Yes.
On the plan.
Yes, your perception is right. We've tried to have low foundation planting and citrus trees and roses and camellias and things of that era around the ahouse, and they will be unique and different than the plantings that will be around the other parts of the project to the middle and to the, to the north part. We are incorporating palm trees in the, in the courtyard between the middle building and the northern building, those will be king palms. We are utilizing the palm on De La Guerra that is coming out for the driveway, transplanting it next to the aught building, so you'll see kind of a trio of queen palms, that is the tree, street tree of De La Guerra. And as Brian mentioned, I wanted, I mistakenly told him that the trees along De La Vina and the one additional tree that we're adding are magnolias, but that street tree actually is the potocarpus.
I was wondering when you said magnolia.
And that was my mistake, and I want to correct it. And certainly Brian did it, because I mentioned it to him, it was my mistake.
Yeah, it's actually, I think it's afrocarpus now. I think, like everything else, you know, eucalyptus is now corumbia, and they just keep changing the names.
They keep changing the botanical Latin. And as far as the other tree, I have walked the tree on the northern entrance with Tim Downey, the urban forester.
Good.
And he is, he suggested, and he said that is a tree that is, is probably better not in this mix, because it's not as healthy and the form is not right. So he would actually encourage it to be removed.
Are you talking about the alder, or the-
The alder, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
So if, if that got removed, you'd replace that with an afrocarpus?
With an afrocarpus.
Good.
Correct.
Okay, that's good. That was another one of my questions. Let me just see if I have any more for, oh, is there any permeable pavement in the project?
Where possible, I think we'll incorporate permeable paving. I think we've not gotten to our, all of our stormwater requirements at this point, and as we move into the details of the paving material. I'd like to, to suggest certain, you know, materials like brick, and that's what this reflects as far as the walkways. And I think we'll look at a permeable brick as a theme of, of paving that I think has got some crown plain charm and some interest and texture, but we'll look at that and study that.
Okay. Because it, it seems to me with some of the maybe heavier water use plants, you know, that are, that fit the theme of the ahouse and things that, you know, something to offset that, like permeable pavement, might be really nice, so. And I realize that just adds expense, but, okay, let me see if I have any more questions. I think that's it. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Okay. I don't see any lights on, so Ms. Kennedy, could you put up our, our marching instructions, please?
Okay, there you go. These are the questions that we're, I'd like you to answer.
Right, okay. So what I would suggest to my fellow Commissioners is that when you're making your comments, you comment on one, and then bullet point one, then bullet point two, and then any additional comments, and I'll try to keep track of them, and if there's a majority of people that feel that way, then we can add those, if that's fair. Okay. We'll start with Commissioner Jordan, since he put his light on. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to mess that up after the first two, because you're just not going to keep up with all my comments, so. I, I don't have any problem with either of the first two bullets. I, it's, it's definitely a general plan target development. I could go home, and if my parents were at the dinner table and my children were at the dinner table, my children would be telling me this is the project of the future, my parents would be asking what I'm doing, and as usual, I'd be sitting there talking about tensions. So I get the, the issues on both of these bullets, from whether it's the neighborhood or the people don't like the look of the change, but I don't think you can quibble with the location, the type of amenities, what it attempts to do, the height is less than its immediate neighbors, it's consistent with what's around. I, I just, I can't, I can't find fault with those two softball questions, okay? I have several other comments just to make that will hopefully be solved sometime next year when we get to come back and see conditions of approval at these type of hearings that we get to decide on. So those aren't, those aren't ours, but De La Vina is particularly that, De La Vina be, you know, downhill from Mission all the way to the end of De La Vina is, is just a mess in terms of traffic and the way people drive. And so I don't know what conditions look like when they come out of HLC or ABR versus Planning Commission, but they don't do that. So I would, I would like to see, make sure that this project parks and stages on-site and not anywhere near De La Vina or De La Guerra. I think that De La Vina in particular is a, just a horrible street begging to be made one lane with bikes.
Wait, would you repeat that? Parks in?
Parks and stages on-site, rather than on the street.
You mean construction?
Correct. Yep. They were nodding at me. In the talk, that you may go back and talk with ABR, Mr. Cornell, on, on, on ceilings and plate heights, I def, I definitely agree with your opinion that a higher ceiling is necessary to offset the feeling of livability of a smaller square footage. And I personally, or just personally, my, my personal feeling is I'm a generation ahead of several of the positive speakers tonight, and the, the small square footages scare me, but they offer some relief if the ceilings are a little higher. And I'm willing to frankly, since these, since the square footages are, are what we're, we're targeting, I'm willing to put up with a little more height to offset the, the requirements on the density. I'd also encourage you to work on a zip car or equivalent, that it could be a zip car or an electric car, but the equivalent of a zip car. I think you're in a prime location, that will be your demographic. And I think, I forget, but I think you can put one of those in and not have to give up a parking space. I believe that's, that's correct. The landscape plan shows palm trees going in on De La Guerra. I'd rather see real trees, whatever my definition of a real tree is, not a palm tree, but a foliage tree, a, Leslie will help me eventually when we get there, a canopy tree, thank you. Thank you, Trish, to help me. I'm not a big fan of palm trees anymore, especially in a downtown corridor for, for cooling purposes, just general ambiance and pedestrian enjoyment. I think a canopy tree is, should be part of your commitment to that streetscape. And that's about all. I think, you know, generally, the, this block, actually these two blocks, the two blocks, the, the block down from Creo and this block of, of, of De La Vina are really hodgepodge blocks. And the gentleman that were here from around the corner, I'm assuming it's the guy from, like, one of the two auto repair shops on De La Guerra, you know, there's some interesting little 60-year-old oddities stuck in these neighborhoods. There's the HVAC across the street from you. If you go a couple of blocks up the street, you've got brand-new rebuilt cement and glass style, modern office buildings. I get that it's changing. I think it's inevitable to choose- I think it's inevitable to change. Some of you snickered on a Cornell project that was here for the Greyhound building when I said the Shapala is going to be the new State Street. Well, De La Vina is going to be the new Shapala eventually. I mean, right? That's going to happen. And there's a reason for that, building out from the core. And I think there's always going to be some tension over the new versus the old. But I think overall, this fits within policy. And I think it's a responsible effort to meet the adjacent uses and the looks. So I'm anxious and hopeful to see your project continue to move forward positively. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to question number one, project consistency with goals and policies of the general plan. Before I jump right into this, I want to make a general comment, especially after listening to the long council hearing on Tuesday of this week. And for the public at large, not only decision makers, our zoning, our goals, our policies that have been codified by city decision makers are in place and must be considered and applied to projects until such time as they are officially changed. I say this because that sounds like, well, isn't that common sense? Isn't that common knowledge? Well, one might not think it is if one hears all of the public comment and even some of the city decision maker deliberations. I say this because here's what's before us. Let's look at the general plan consistency. And I am going to say yes to number one. Let's go through it. We have specific elements of our general plan that, if I'm recalling correctly, Mr. DeBusschere, took eight years of city and public engagement to craft. So this is not done whimsically or without serious consideration by the community at large. Under land use, and I'm going to start on page seven of our staff report so that I can drill down on exactly why I'm voting yes on number one. And I'm just going to highlight just a few sentences across all of these elements. So land use element. This neighborhood is one of the oldest in the city and is predominantly developed with commercial and multifamily land uses, with some single-family residences. The area has seen increased development over the past 20 years with a transition to higher density residential projects. So we have zoning, we have policies, we have development standards, and we have a neighborhood in transition. And that's a fact that we all have to grapple with, and we have to find balance. Probably with some lack of popularity in some of the decisions. But over time, I feel that the Planning Commission, in addition to some of the design review bodies, will make the right decision in conjunction with neighbor feedback. So if I could pause for a minute, I appreciate the property owner, developer, Mr. Basson, engaging in what we call the good neighbor policy. And I would continue, I would ask you to continue to do that. Where it's at all possible to adjust or consider neighbor concerns, we strongly recommend that that take place. And it sounds like you're, that's underway. Let me go to the second element, housing element. A goal of the housing element is to encourage construction of a wide range, not a single type, a wide range of housing types to meet the needs of various household types. Not one age group, not one socioeconomic category, and not one employment sector. And to assist in the production of new housing opportunities which vary sufficiently in type and affordability to meet the needs of all economic and social groups. This is in our land use Bible. This is in the general plan. So until such time, as the city council changes our general plan, these are our guiding considerations. So that's that then. We go to historic resources element. I appreciate that we had a lunchtime opportunity to have discussion with our city historian about this. Very succinctly put, from both the Phase One and Phase Two Historic Structures Reports and from vetting at the Historic Landmarks Commission. And in our staff report, the report concludes, Phase Two in particular, the project's proposed impacts to significant historic resources on and adjacent to this project site are less than significant. That term is an important standard bearer of our consideration and our deliberation. So I can find it consistent there. Environmental resources element. This is the second to the last one. Again, for many members of the public, you may not know that we have to go through each one of these elements when we answer that one seemingly very simple question. Okay, environmental resources. The proposed project is located in the downtown core where views of the mountains or beach are not readily available from the public street due to existing development. The project would not significantly, significantly alter views to public resources where there are neighbor concerns. Again, we're going to have neighbor to neighbor, developer to neighbor conversations to see where there are significant concerns and perhaps make adjustments if they're reasonable. Lastly, we have our circulation element to be considered under number one. And here, it includes multiple policies and implementation strategies to encourage alternative modes of transportation. We've already heard from Mr. Basson about what's being conceived, and I'm sure there'll be more discussion about that. But let me just pause and say, I'm very appreciative of your discussions with the owners of the Paseo Nuevo shopping mall parking structure to see if there could be some opportunities for the residents of this proposed project to park there. We had just a different kind of conversation earlier today on a different proposed project, which didn't seem like that was going to be an option. But it sounds like we may be able to find that here. And I think this points to an encouraging view into the future of unbundling parking downtown. Not going to get into it, Ms. Osteringer, don't worry. I'm not going to go beyond this. But just to say, good news, encouraging, can't wait to have bigger discussions about that kind of policy. Okay. So now let's get to number two, size, mass, bulk, scale. I'm going, and height. So in size, mass, bulk, scale, see, these are four words. And I love to have conversations with Historic Landmarks Commissioner Bill Mahan. And we have regular conversations about this. I know that he encourages his colleagues to understand, these are different words and they're different terms, and they need to be separated out. It's not one homogeneous litmus test. And I'm still not hearing that at HLC. I'm sorry, I have to just say that out loud. And I would encourage, and I've asked Mr. Mahan if he would be interested in taking the lead on working with his commission and city decision, other city decision makers, to clearly define for consistent interpretation and application each of these terms, size, mass, bulk, scale. Okay, then we get to height. That's pretty straightforward. We have our city zoning. We have the average unit size density incentive program, which clearly lays out appropriate heights. I already asked my question of Mr. Cornell about some of the adjustments that have been voluntarily offered. On my, you know, it doesn't sound like it's totally voluntary to me, but that's for another day. But if you're willing to make some adjustments in density and height to get through the process, that's, you know, that's on you. And so I'm going to say yes to number two. Okay, any additional? As we move forward with projects like this, the average unit size density incentive program projects, or any other mixed-use multifamily projects, the long, here's the economics of it for all of us to bear in mind. The longer a project takes going through a city process, the more cost that builds. And that will make its way out somewhere, whether it's a for sale or it's a rental. So I would just ask us all to recommit, to redoubling our efforts, to balance our standards, our quality of standards, our aesthetic standards, quality of life, et cetera, Santa Barbara being a beautiful place, with some reasonable balancing factors about streamlining processes and practices to assist a project moving a little more nimbly through the process. And I think, Mr. Cornell, I heard you testify at council on Tuesday, that there is no streamline process for these types of projects. That's a misnomer. Now, that's not to say we're going to abandon our values in Santa Barbara. That's certainly not the case. But I feel the pendulum needs to swing a little bit farther to the middle in terms of how we're conducting ourselves in reviewing these types of projects to actually get rental housing built. We can deal with everything else when big policy stuff comes back to Planning Commission. But for now, those are my additional comments. And Madam Chair, unless there's anything else, that concludes it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. I appreciated your explanation of number one and how you got there. I think that's very helpful. Okay, Commissioner Higgins, you're next, I think?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I think the answer to number one is yes. Number two, I'm having a little trouble with because I think I feel the most sympathy for Mr. McDermott at the back end, figuratively and literally here. I just can't, the exhibits that we're getting, I don't think, are giving me a high level of confidence of what the compatibility is between the two properties. So as you go to the HLC, I think you could beef up those exhibits too and be ready for a conversation maybe with units 31 and 32. And, you know, when planners play architect or contractor, you know, walking a very dangerous plank in terms of plate heights with one part of the building versus another, I'm sorry, I should, I'm going to regret saying that. But anything you can do to lower that part of the building, or if there's room to maybe increase units 28, I'm sorry, 29 and 30 into a one-bedroom, and maybe step that part of the building back for more sunlight for the benefit of that property owner behind you. I know you've shaved units already. I don't ask that lightly, but it's something you may just want to be ready to talk about at HLC. Aside from that, I really appreciate the public comment and younger generation compatibility, I'm sorry, consistency with our general plan and the direction that our downtown needs ahead. I have rented in this town for 15 years, know full well the quality of the rental stock here. And it just takes the, you know, you need the momentum financially to get through a process like this, not to mention financing. So I wish you all the luck in the world. Hope that the velocity of your project continues on in an expedient way. And I wish you luck with the building department, too, and the rest of your process. I'm not really happy that the story poles were only up for two days. And I know that we don't really have, you know, standards for that. But this is the second time we've had a project like this of this magnitude have story pole duration problems. And I think it, you know, if we could do a better job on projects of this size and magnitude so that the window to look at a project like this is long enough for not only all the neighbors, commissioners, HLC, and potentially city council members to come and take a look. Because these are, some of these anyway land in their lap eventually. I don't know what you can do really about the neighbor on De La Guera, Mr. Williams, other than better conditions of approval, if at all, on better notification to his, of your tenants about the automotive nature of their neighbors. If it were me, I'd want an annual notice or something that goes in the record when they rent in their rental agreement that that's their, that's going to save you some headache, too, or whoever's managing the property. And so I'm a question mark on bullet two, and you've heard the rest of my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to have to go back to a question that I started to ask, and I was told, no, it doesn't apply here. On page four of the staff report, the, one, two, three, four, five, six, sixth bullet down, it says, "Parking spaces narrowed and one space added." I'm curious about that. Sounds like if that's a possibility, other developers would be doing it as well.
Page four of the staff report?
It was in reference to the, what the HLC actions on August 22, 2018. And these are the following revisions that have been made to the project plans.
So these were provided to staff from the architectural team?
They were?
Yes.
I'm honestly not sure what that means.
Okay.
I apologize. I mean, we, you know, what we, maybe what that refers to is leaving, if you recall on the plan, we've got pretty ample space at the structural columns. And that may have been the adjustment that was made and what it meant. I'm not sure. Because we ended up, basically, when we started this, we were basically assuming 10-foot, 10-foot width between spaces, knowing that we were going to have columns and things. And so that did adjust a little bit. So that might be what it meant. But it is all within the parking standards, the way the layout works.
Okay. Well, and then the last bullet, it says, "Trees shown as deciduous." Is that in contrast to evergreen?
That would be in contrast to evergreen, yes. And I'm not sure what that is referring to either. Do you have any idea?
No.
Trees shown as deciduous.
I think there's only one tree we've proposed. We have a list of choices in our tree list at this point.
Well, I did see sycamore there, which would be...
Sycamore would be deciduous, that's one. We have also jacaranda. We have hymenosprum, hydrosporum. We also have the potocarpus, mostly looking at evergreen. So we do have an accent piece like the sycamore, potentially like the jacaranda. But the majority would be canopy and shade and evergreen trees for the softening of the...
Okay, yeah. Which is something that HLC asked for, that there be more to kind of screen the building.
And this is, by the way, this is a little bit process oriented, and it's probably all moot now since this may be your last concept review. But initially, staff kind of took the position, or they have taken the position, that we want Planning Commission to see exactly what HLC sees. We don't want to see evolution. Well, for instance, one of the things that evolved was the decision to go with the one-way drive. Now subsequently, HLC has seen that, but we sort of struggled with that, and that may explain why these are, you know, attempting to display those things that were different from what that HLC review was.
Okay, well, as far as I'm concerned, bigger, greener, all year round is better.
Good input.
Sure, sure.
I just, I have one question. Commissioner Jordan was talking about anti-palms and, you know, more, yeah, more...
Anti-palm.
More...
I didn't know he said anti. I thought preference.
I'm anti-palms, too.
More canopy trees. But did I hear you say that the street tree along De La Guera is...
Is the queen palm.
Is the queen palm.
We are utilizing one that's being removed for that driveway entrance and exit into our property to actually accentuate the group.
Refresh my memory because I don't remember. Are there, is there a predominance of queen palms on that block?
On De La Guera?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So it wouldn't really do any good to go to the street tree advisory committee and try to change the street tree designation on that block?
It would go against the historic nature of that block of De La Guera.
Right, okay. That's what I thought. Okay, so, Mr. Anti-Palm, I don't know how you're going to... Okay, I'm flanked by them. It's terrible. Okay. Commissioner Lodge, I'm sorry to jump in like that. Please continue.
While we're on the subject of palms, in case there are others that didn't know it, I only recently found out that they're actually a grass. They're not a tree.
Correct.
And that's probably part of why I don't like them, you know, this stalk of grass, stalk of grass with a little fringe on the top. Okay, let's get back to business. Yes, the project is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan, size, mass, bulk, scale, and height, while the, it has been brought down from what it was. And I appreciate, and appreciate the breaking up of the building. And HLC is accepting of the present size mass, bulk, scale. And HLC is accepting of the present size mass, mass, bulk scale, and height. Whatever that can be done to reduce that further, I think would be appropriate. It is still a big building for that neighborhood. And just on some of the other things, I would disagree with the HLC, and I think the hedges should be kept, that they, you know, we give a little separation for this common open space, for one thing, and it seems to me appropriate for the outhouse. Moving the outhouse, I think, actually is going to put it in a better location. It's going to be, it's going to stand out more. And the, I know there was one letter that said, you know, that it was important to keep it next to the house at 8:15, but I think this will make it, it certainly will be more noticeable, and we'll set it off better than where it is. And I guess those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. Okay, I'm just going to go through mine, probably just in response to others, and maybe add a couple. I'm fine with the first two bullet points, as are, I think, the majority of my fellow I agree with Commissioner Lodge that moving the outhouse to the corner, it puts, it puts it in a more prominent place, and I think that's, that's a good thing. I think it's going to be nice, and I appreciate that the landscaping there is different than, than the landscaping on the main project site, I'll call it. The hedge I wasn't sure about, but I, after hearing from the landscape architect, I think that, I agree with Commissioner Lodge on that, that incorporating the hedge is a good thing, and also particularly for the separation of, from the open yard on the property site. Excuse me. I absolutely believe that the alder needs to be replaced with the podocarpus for continuity, and also just because it's a much more prominent tree on that street on De La Vina. And I would encourage the applicant to, and the architect, to use permeable pavement where possible. I think, I think that's just a nice feature, and it's the way a lot of these projects are going, and the way they're coming to us is with permeable pavement, and I think that's, that's important. And I appreciate the simplicity of the architecture and the quiet design. I'm fine with that. And also with the, with the owner's outreach to the neighbors. And I know that it's very difficult, change is very difficult, but you, you heard very different viewpoints here today from people, and I hope that you, Mr. Basson, continue to work with the neighbors to, you know, tweak the design wherever possible. I mean, I think taking out that whole story is, is great, and tweak the design wherever possible to accommodate your neighbors and work with them and continue to work with them. And I think that's, that's very important, and we appreciate the comments from the neighbors, both, both supporting the project and not supporting the project. The views are very different, and we do have, as Commissioner Jordan said, we have different generations here with different objectives, and we have to, and we also have state laws now that, that require us to, to build workforce housing, rental workforce housing. So we're trying to accommodate that. So I think Commissioner Thompson came in late with you.
I'm in here.
Well, I know, but your light wasn't on, so I just figured I'd go ahead. So go for it.
Okay, better late than never. Absolutely, it is consistent with the general plan. As far as the size of the project, I think that the scale is appropriate, the size is appropriate. I think the mass and height, as viewed from the back of the project, so to speak, might, could use some more looking at it. You've done a really good job of reducing the apparent mass and bulk of the building as viewed from De La Vina, but from the rear of the project, it comes across as being a little massive than it does from the De La Vina side, so you might want to do some work on that. And as I said before, the only other comment I would have is that it's important, when you're kind of breaking new ground, so to speak, in a neighborhood, to keep working with the people in the neighborhood, and do your best to try to come to some degree of accommodation.
Thank you. Okay. So I think what we'll do, I heard some varying opinions on, on number two. So you want a majority vote? Okay, so let's just take the bullet points separately, if that's okay with my fellow commissioners. So on number one is the project consists with the goals and policies of the general plan. I think we're all in agreeance.
Do you want to do voice roll? How do you want to do the call? How do you want to do the...
Just yea, nay. Yeah.
Yea.
So, all in favor of bullet point number one?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that, that is a unanimous majority vote? Okay. And then on number two, I think we'll, we'll vote, and then for those that are not in favor, perhaps they could just repeat their comments as to why they're not in favor, because I heard some people specifically not be in favor for part of that, and when you put size, mass, bulk and scale and height all together in one big lump, it's, it's very difficult. So, okay, bullet point number two, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Soft aye.
Pardon?
I said a soft aye.
The potential, a potential...
As I said, I think that it can use a little more looking at it, but in general, it's, it's...
Okay. Could we put that as an aside comment then for that, that, because I think there's several commissioners up here that agree with that, that it could use a little more work. Commissioner Lodge?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Well, you didn't, you didn't ask for...
Yeah, no, so, okay. No. No.
No. I'm a no also.
Your no also.
Only because I can't tell. I think the exhibits are, and maybe procedurally, this is the reason, you know, they just, it's hard to tell what's happening on the back end, and I'm not a fan of two-day story polls.
So are you, when you say the back end, are you talking about the back of the building, or...
The building's relationship at the back to the properties on Bath Street?
De La Guera.
No.
Yeah.
No, he's...
They, their access is off De La Guera, not off Bath.
De La Guera, yeah.
But the majority of the building faces...
It's the south, it's the south.
And I just, you know, I'm putting it out there that the exhibits don't give, what I have seen in the past from other applicants, or this applicant team, has been a better study of the relationship between the structures.
Okay. So you would encourage HLC to further study the relationship between the structures?
I would.
Okay, great. And Commissioner Lodge?
I'll go along with that and look at possible articulation in the, on the back, well, on the back property line, that would be what the, it's always looking to the west property line, and the buildings that are really being significantly impacted by the...
That's where I think we're confused, because I would have called it the west property line, too, and I think, Commissioner Higgins, that's what you're referring to. Yes. Yeah, okay, thank you.
For the record, it's Mr. McDermott's interface.
Delegate West Homeowners Association.
Okay. Okay. So we have, Ms. Vaughn, did you get that? We have two noes, and you have the reasons why, and one soft yes, and three yeses. Okay.
Four yeses, two noes.
Correct. That's correct, yeah, okay. And you'll list the reasons why they're, yeah, okay. And then, so any other addition majority comments? Okay, so Commissioner Jordan said parking stages on the site. I don't know what that means.
We usually have a template requirement for our projects, that there's no parking on the street or in construction period. They have to park on site.
Oh, you're referring to construction.
But that's a condition of approval, which is not what we're...
There are no conditions of approval.
We don't have conditions of approval.
They won't have conditions of approval.
We're not voting today, we're...
Yeah, we're not...
They won't have conditions of approval at the HLC.
Okay, so, okay. So does, do all of, so do fellow commissioners agree with construction parking in stages on the site? Go ahead.
Construction parking and staging is how it's usually phrased.
And staging on the site, okay.
Chair, I don't know how we can do this. I'd like to hear from Ms. Ostering.
It's just a comment.
That's not a HLC item either, that's a public works item.
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it can, a comment directed to the applicant, but it's not something that the HLC could condition.
Okay, so Commissioner Jordan's second comment, which I think we can come, we can decide on or comment on, since we're supposed to do this by majority vote, the ceiling height. You were, you were encouraging higher ceilings, so I assume that means nine to nine and a half feet.
As shown on the plan.
Yeah, okay. And do my fellow commissioners concur with that comment?
I do.
I see Commissioner Schwartz, Commissioner Lodge?
No.
No. Okay. Commissioner Higgins?
No comment.
Okay, and Commissioner Thompson?
I have no input on that. I think that's entirely up to the designer and the HLC.
Okay. Okay, so we have, that stays out of there, encourage zip cars. I guess these really aren't in our purview.
Actually, Madam Chair, the ordinance clearly says that the comments are partially in design of the project. That's our comment, that's our comment purview. We are commenting on the design of the project.
Let me clarify, the, you know, I'm, I'm sensitive to the, this new issue of livability versus affordability, and I wish you the best of luck through the rest of the process. I don't particularly feel like, you know, we ought to be sacrificing livability in that regard. In other words, I, you know, I feel like if we're going to have small units, then taller plate height is, is important to your economics and the livability of, for your tenants, but I'm also sensitive to how that, you know, you should be wary of that issue as you continue through the rest of the process, as we've seen. So just fair warning, that may come up rather severely with, with our design review process.
Okay. So I'm going to do it this way, what are the ceiling heights now in the units? Mr. Cornell, are they...
We've, we've designed them to be nine and a half feet.
Okay, okay. So I, let's, let's just take a vote on this. We encourage, we encourage the commission to retain the higher ceiling heights for livability. Take a vote. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioner Lodge and Commissioner Thompson are no?
I'm going to abstain, because I don't think that this has anything to do with land use, and so, like I said, it's up to the designer and the HLC to work it out.
Okay, I'm, I'm, that's fine. So we have one no, and then one abstention, Commissioner Lodge is no, and Commissioner Thompson is abstaining. Okay. I don't think we have to go to the palm tree on De La Guera. I'm just, I'm really just going over what we have on our comments. Does anyone want to, I think it's important for us to talk about the hedges, because that's, that's obviously a conflicting issue, and it is landscape, so Commissioner Lodge thinks the hedges should be kept. I think HLC, at one of their meetings, said no. So do we want to make a comment on that? Should we encourage the...
No comment.
No comment, okay. Do you, you want to say...
Well, I already said that I think...
Okay, and I agree with that.
I would also agree, that was actually on, on my list and last, that especially with the, the air, the designation of that area as the big block of the livable space, that I would like some separation between that and the streetscape.
The, the open yard space, livable space, yeah.
The hedge would provide that separation.
Correct, yes, okay. Commissioner Higgins?
I can support that, but I'm sort of loathing getting into this level of detail that's a designer view, so...
Well, okay, we have it, so Commissioner Thompson?
Well, I'd like to trade your hedges for a palm tree. The hedges are fine, as long as it doesn't get overgrown and...
Right, okay.
And provide a huge blank wall to the street, but for some reasonable degree of privacy in the yard, it's nothing wrong with the hedge.
Okay, so we have, we have five yes for, we encourage HLC to keep the hedge, and we have one no comment.
No, I'm going to roll my eyes and go with my colleague.
Okay.
I don't like abstaining, because on principle, I think that's cowardly, so I'm going to...
That carries unanimously by majority vote, and you know what?
We're all getting punchy, so...
We, we're getting punchy, and I think that we have, we don't need to vote, I don't think, on replacing the alder with the podocarpus, because I think that's going to happen anyway. That's, I think, that's it. I think we're, we're done unless someone wants to get in the weeds further than I already did. I always, when it always says, are there any additional majority comments from the commission, that's, that's the hardest one, I think, always.
The process is going to change.
Thank goodness, yes, okay. Thank you all very much, and we're done with this item. Thank you for coming, really appreciate it.
We'll be doing more of these.
And...
We'll be doing more of these.
See you soon.
Yeah, we have, we have one more item on our agenda. Do you, do you have, if you, if you could take your conversation just outside the chambers, we'd appreciate it, please, thank you. Do you, do you want to...
Gavel, gavel, gavel.
Do you want to do the item for A1, Staff Hearing Officer liaison report? Do you have one?
Staff Hearing Officer report this morning, there were, or yesterday morning, excuse me.
Excuse me, we have more business to conduct. Could you take your conversations outside? That's okay, thank you.
Yesterday was setback modifications, open yard modifications, so nothing exciting.
How fun, okay. Okay, so administrative agenda item for A2, other committee and liaison reports, does anyone, yes, Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sea level rise adaptation, Subcommittee met subsequent to the last Planning Commission hearing, we're meeting again next week, but last night there was public open house, maybe some of you attended. The draft sea level rise vulnerability assessment was released last week, and so we're continuing to look at mapping hazard strategies in the essence of time, I won't go into too much detail here, more to follow, but certainly we are incorporating and considering guidelines and the latest science, both at the federal and state level, as we look to ultimately prepare a plan that's going to go to the California Coastal Commission. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On November 14, the Historic Landmarks Commission gave project design approval to the Parker Boutique Hotel. It had been before the, the one on the corner of Caixote, Caixote, Cisneros, Cisneros, Chavez, and Cabrillo, the one that's behind the, the green fence right now, and has been for a long time. This project has come a long way, they were not pleased with the project as it was first presented, but there were comments that they are very pleased now. There were eight HLC hearings, and the project will be coming back for approval of details.
Great, thank you. And they kept, did they keep the, the building out back for the, the, yeah?
Oh, yes, that is, that is, the, the back of house building is across, is across the railroad tracks, and that one is being processed through ABR.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you, thank you for that. Okay, Commissioner Thompson?
Two items, the single-family design board... Two items, the single-family design board hasn't had a lot of projects recently that will be of any interest to the planning commission, not coming here for coastal development permits or whatever, but there have been a couple of projects recently where the public has come to try to complain to the design board about project work going on after the project's been red-tagged, and I've told the people that have done that, that they really need to go to the city council or to their city council representatives. Apparently this has happened not just once, but several times, and the people are coming to the design board looking for relief, and they don't really know how to, how to get somebody to listen to them. The other item is the, Tuesday night, the city council had the appeal hearing for 104 Jorgensen Lane. Commissioner Lodge and I attended the marathon session, the appeal was denied. However, the property owner, in the course of that hearing, did volunteer to encumber the two properties, his existing property and the new lot to be created, that they would not build an ADU on those properties, so that does tend to help some of the neighbors' concerns about traffic in the area in case of an evacuation, which seemed to be their main concern. The fire department was on record as saying the property will be safer with the house and landscaping there, so the traffic seemed to be their main area of concern, which should be alleviated. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Just to follow up on what Commissioner Schwartz said, I did attend the sea level rise public meeting last night, and it was very well-attended, I thought staff did a great job. The presentation from ESA was fantastic, and there were lots of good questions asked, and I think as the word spreads, there's going to be more public interest, but, but I was very pleased on a kind of a rainy night, how many, how many, with no parking around, how many people showed up, so it was very good. And with that, I don't think we have any further business, our next scheduled meeting will be, we, next week's meeting is canceled, and so our next scheduled meeting is, regular meeting, is Thursday, December 20, 2018. Thank you very much, all, we're adjourned.